For which stands the nation unto God, and with this will with liberty and justice for all.
Let's see, what I call the Exeter Town Council Regular Meeting for Thursday, September fifth, two thousand twenty-three to order, will the police take the roll?
Dan Patterson, Michael Dave.
Here.
Daniel Brown.
Here.
Libby DeFrancesco here, and Val Ellis.
Here.
Okay, next up, number three, acknowledgements, announcements, transfer station permits expire September thirtieth, free permits for permits period October first, two thousand twenty-three through September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, available for purchase in Burke's office via mail, drop box, or online, please see the town website for details. B, nine eleven remembrance ceremony will be held at the Wall of Honor for Island Veterans' Memorial Cemetery, Exeter, Rhode Island, Monday, September eleventh, two thousand twenty-three at nine a.m. Next up, approval of the agenda order. Oh, sorry, throw that.
I just wanted to remind everyone about the Exeter Fall Festival that Francis the Lockery put on, the twenty-third, and from Kansas City, it's a great time, everybody.
Did you say was that Yadi?
Yeah, it was really scary, yeah, and I was gonna speak, so.
Good call.
Got it.
Okay, next up is approval of the agenda order. Orders to be approved.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the consent agenda, I believe everybody here has made, we don't have to pull into meeting minutes, do we?
I don't think so.
Well, there was one, I wasn't.
The executive session.
Yeah, I wasn't, did you make that correction? Okay, yeah, I wasn't here on that one, okay, I had to recuse myself.
And I need to follow up.
Reynolds, you have two, number five and number sixteen, communications. Reports.
Anybody want to put communications?
I'd say twenty twenty-three.
Twenty and what?
Twenty-three.
Is that reports or communications?
No, it's, well, they didn't ask about communications.
Reports, uh, yeah, the reports for attending communication.
Three and four, please, reports, yes. Anything down here?
Uh, no.
There's a lot of communications in there, I circled, but we're gonna be covered in any case.
Well, that's true.
Okay.
Is there something for seventeen about the seven?
Seventeen.
That's not the seven, that's Exeter.
At the date of remembrance.
Okay, okay, motion to approve the consent agenda as amended, we'll have to do a second vote on the minutes, do you need to choose yourself?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, let's see.
We need a motion.
I need to do a motion. I thought he did, no. Oh, I'll say.
We need a motion to approve the council regular meeting, August seventh, two thousand twenty-three, and you were here for sixteen. I was here for, I think I was here for everything.
That was the one you asked me. Executive session, that could be asked.
It's the executive session, we gotta focus that on.
Yes.
Okay, so we're voting on council regular meetings, August seventh, and council special meeting, August sixteenth.
I'll move to approve.
Yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Council regular meeting, executive section, session, August seventh, two thousand twenty-three, motion to approve.
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next up is vacancies, personnel board, conservation commission. Resignations, we have three here, tax assessors, clerk Amber Gardner, who's taken a job in the book sheet at the school floor in Massachusetts.
I'll move to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Can we send her a letter of thanks for all her hard work, please?
She wrote a really nice letter, she's very, very well-written and respectful, impressive.
Yeah, I would just add to that comment, thank her for her work and wish her the best, as you will, I know, on her new position in the field in which she wishes to be employed.
All in favor?
Aye.
We also need a motion to post for that position.
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next up, our electrical inspector, who's been here forever, Randy McGovern, who's resigning, effective September fifteenth, so we need a motion to accept Randy's resignation.
Some move with regret, then.
Yes.
What's that?
With regret.
With regrets, yeah.
How many years do you?
Eighty-five.
I know, as long as I can remember.
Forty years, oh, forty years, I did talk to him, I think he said about forty years.
Well, he'll send a letter of appreciation, won't you, and that the council recognizes for what he's done for us now.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion to post that position.
Some move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is Michael Pacillo, from the school committee, has resigned, he was about a month ago, he moved to Opington. Danny knows more than I do, she reached out.
Now, his cancer is, he can't really do anything. But regret, I was.
Does he need a motion to accept Michael Pacillo's school?
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next up is.
And to post.
Nope, go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And to post, that was it.
Uh, well, we have one individual that's interested in it, and he did send in a letter, and he was the runner-up, we're gonna get to that down at the bottom of, oh, number seven, so.
You shouldn't post, though, because nobody knows the vacancy.
Well, I went, when I found out, I talked to Jim about this whole situation, so we came with, yeah, this was like, had to be five or six weeks ago, after the fiasco in general, I called Jim. Okay, next up, appointments, juvenile hearing board, alternate member to serve three-year term, beginning date of appointment. Exeter Rural, continue to post, Exeter Rural Land Preservation Trust Committee member to serve four-year term, beginning date of appointment. Continue to post, Woodpocketuck Wild and Seenic River Stewardship Council, alternate member. Continue to post, library board of trustees, member to serve three-year term, beginning date of appointment.
I have a question, can we ask TN to post these openings on the library website, or their Facebook page, or whatever, to get a broader audience?
Yeah, newsletter.
Newsletter, um.
The whole, the whole list of.
Yeah, just the list of postings, or put a link to our website where we have all the jobs, or board vacancies.
It is on ours.
Yeah, I know it's on ours, but I'm just thinking, if we can reach more people.
Yeah, anyone who's backing on the crew. Well, sir.
Dan, when we do announcements, you know, with the acknowledgements at the beginning, what we ought to say is, all of these potential appointments, everyone, these are like announcements, these are vacancies, and people, think about, think about it.
Okay.
Well, you know what I say.
It's never-ending here, don't worry, it happens everywhere. Number five, board of canvassers, alternate member to serve unexpired term ending May third, two thousand twenty-seven. Nothing? Hang on, the next one, zoning board review member to serve five-year term, beginning date of appointment, ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-eight, and Timothy Robertson, that is a member, has sent us a communication requesting renewal of his commission as a full-time zoning board member. Go ahead, Cal, make a motion.
Well, we've discussed, you know, in the past whether we need to approve, but he's already indicated he'd like to continue, in my opinion, we should recognize, unless the council.
This was posted, though, already.
Was it already posted?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would move to reappoint Timothy Robertson.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number seven, school committee member to serve term ending November two thousand twenty-four, when I was informed, I got ahold of the town solicitor, because the fiasco with Cherah, and Mike Pacillo was elected in November two thousand and twenty, there was no runner-up in that election, and the two thousand twenty-two election, there was one runner-up in that election, Kevin Robishaw, and my feeling is, and I don't care what their political views are, at least we had an individual that stepped up to the plate and run for that office, so my motion is to appoint Mr. Robishaw to finish the term ending November two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
Any discussions? He does serve on the building committee out there.
The economic development.
No, the.
Oh.
The E W G.
Capital Fund of Political.
Yeah.
Is he on the, the economic development committee, too?
Was, yes, was.
You were, okay.
Like I said, I don't care what their party affiliation is, we only have this one runner-up in two elections, my feeling is, someone steps up to the plate and runs for office. Go ahead, Cal.
I, I agree with that, until, like, now that, like, there's been some, he's very present online, um, uh, he's just very present online, and that's fine, but when you're an elected official, or an appointed official, that needs to be toned down a little bit. That's my two cents on the.
Okay, any other discussions?
I'm not sure what my colleague speaks, but I understand the concept of which it just suggests that, well, I couldn't agree more, I think whatever appropriate behavior is appropriate is always what we should look for, and what we should expect.
Okay, any other discussion down here? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, D, expiring terms? You don't have anything down there, okay, before, just skip over it. Number seven, public hearings, public entertainment license application, Anthony Gemma, one-oh-six, Tenrod Road, Exeter, Rhode Island applicant, to hold drive-through holiday displays on his property and supported the Gloria Gemma Breast Cancer Foundation in memory of his mother, October first through October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, nine a.m. to ten p.m. Halloween, and then November twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three, through January first, two thousand twenty-four, nine a.m. to ten p.m. Christmas, police details will be hired weekends, Friday and Saturday, as needed, I need a motion to open the public hearings.
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, uh, let's see, is Mr. Gemma here?
Yes.
Come on up.
Annual meeting, I guess, so, just have to remind you about the map, we're gonna cover the map that we did last year, bring to your attention that we did do a DOT study, DOT did sign off on what we did, we did have no incidents at Halloween, we did have a shutdown on one Saturday, two Saturdays, actually, late evening at Christmas time, that was due to, we do give out toys to the kids, and Santa was there, so this year we're just adjusting to not announce that, maybe they'll make a couple of random appearances, but that's what drove the major traffic issue that we had on that one Saturday.
So you published, or you announced that you were gonna give toys away to just random children?
Yeah, we did, well, we did.
Like Santa will be there from nine to three, and.
That's what happened, it was six.
Hundred toys, or whatever.
Six to eat, we announced that we're giving away, Santa was gonna be there and giving away for gifts, so just have to eliminate, that's the only, I think that's what drove people, that, those two evenings, so we just would eliminate that as a, Santa would come, but it would just be a random thing, just having luck of the draw, you happen to be around without any announcement, which won't drive a bunch of traffic.
Yeah, I've been to both of those.
Thank you.
Since you first started doing.
Yeah.
My friend done it, well.
Is this a nonprofit?
Yeah, Gloria Gemma, yes, so nine, so the nine-oh-one, seat, nine-oh-six.
How many accidents did we have, how many accidents we had last year, Scoop, do you know?
Last year, there was probably two, but they weren't in the zone that we have combed off, they were up near South Road, somebody was pulling a Uwe.
Again, last year, they haven't hit before that, too, in the same spot.
Yeah, that same spot, so, and then we had one drunk driver came through, that wasn't this year, last year was the year before, where we had a drunk driver come through and take out all the cones, luckily, they didn't hit anybody, we did get the plate, we called it in, and North Kingston called, so.
So there was no inju, were there any injuries last year?
No.
Were there any injuries the year before?
No.
Okay, is there any way we could put a constable, somebody, at the South Road intersection of one or two, so that people aren't allowed to pull, is that, is that something that we could think about to eliminate, that's, two years in a row, we got an accident there?
Well, what's happening is, they're turning around before South Road, they're turning around in people's driveways and backing back out, and the way people come over that hill and pass South Road, the road widens, and then it narrows again, and the people are turning around right within that, like, that narrow area, the state police has sat there, not last year, but the year before, and they actually gave out tickets for people pulling U-turns, we can't do that, we don't have the authority to do that, so actually having somebody up there would be, the only thing that they would be able to do is let people out of South Road when the traffic starts backing up, but then you have a bigger problem anyway.
So we don't think it's a.
I don't know if it's.
Enhance safety by having somebody there, and standing out with a light and a vest, and.
I mean, I walked all the way up, and there was nothing I could do, especially when the traffic backed up that far.
Okay. I mean, we have Anthony, he's a nice guy, like, and.
Oh, yeah.
Also known Jim for a long time, probably twenty-six, twenty-seven years, and I like and respect him, and he is very upset about it, and I, I, you know, I don't know what to, personally, I don't know what to do about that, because I, I think it's a good cause, but I also wanna do everything we can to continue to respect the neighbors, and try to avoid accidents, and try to avoid people turning around in his driveway, so the headlights don't go in his living room.
Well, I don't know, I know he had cones out there, he says he's, when I talked to Jim, too, he didn't have any problems the nights we were there, it's the nights that we're not there, that, I guess, people start turning around in his driveway, 'cause I have my car at one end of his driveway, and we, if there's no cones there, we do cone it off, we actually cone off other people's driveways that are within the zone that we're coning off, the whole area, so we can actually have three lanes of travel, we have two lanes going north and south, and then we have a lane so they can pull into Mr. Gemma's property.
Council, President, Dan suggesting cutting back on the hours a little bit?
That was my question, uh, during, what is it, Thursday, was it Friday and Saturdays are the busiest nights?
Yeah, I would say that Friday and Saturdays are.
Like, I'm looking at the other hours, if we were to cut them back to, like, nine o'clock, would that be an issue?
I mean, it wouldn't be an issue, I just, I don't, I worry about condensing the hours and bringing more people, as opposed to spreading them out, that's.
And are these the hours that you had last year, I thought they ended at nine last year.
I believe that they ended a little bit earlier last year, we just extended it to give us that flexibility, I'm just trying to extend up.
Yeah, I get that.
People coming in, but I, you know, respectfully, I, I don't know what I would do, I think it might hurt more than eight.
Well, I was talking to Scoop the other day about this, the other issue is, his constables, right now, they're slammed, and getting them to work on top of working eight or nine hours during the day, we've actually had to get another constable from another town to keep up.
Yeah.
So people are getting spread thin, on the holidays, the last thing these guys wanna do is work at night, I can understand that also, so, that's why it was, like, Sunday through Thursday, I'm cutting it, running Friday, Saturday, ten o'clock.
Yeah, that's fine, that's, that's what you're thinking, that's, I just, I don't know what it's gonna do for the traffic, that goes back to the hours we had last year.
Okay.
I just tried to extend it just to see if it would help out, but it doesn't matter, we can.
Like I said, it's, it's for a fantastic cause, but people are having issues with it, you know, who, I call, they call them double-edged swords, you know, you hear if you do, if you don't, so.
It's also really nice, because people come from towns all over Southern Rhode Island, probably some from North with the children, and it's really exciting, I know when you're a little kid and you've got something like this to go to.
Yeah.
It's so exciting, I think it's a good cause financially, and also for the children, I go through it myself, probably a couple times, with my wife and I, it's pretty cool. Question, Cal?
Yeah, I, you know, I think about rescue that needs to get through if traffic is blocked, I mean, I know these have been issues that you, you can't help, but they're significant, and I guess, my, my question is, that last year, and we seem to, I recall, we had a considerable amount of discussion about some signage approaching, like, I don't know, I'm just gonna throw out the Situate Art Festival, or some other kind of places on a town, on a state road, or whatever, where there's some warning about something that says, you know, slow, try something, and I know, we, didn't we talk about that?
Yes, we did, we did, we tested them, yes.
Were you able to do something with that?
It's been two thousand dollars on forebран construction signs, one says special been ahead, I think it says, traffic.
That's what I can't remember.
How far off are they from your?
So the.
Like, 'cause I see sometimes a construction.
When we set them out, we had one, the first one was way down near Bald Hill Nurseries, and then they worked their way up, and they were long before, they, you know, 'cause where our cars are, our cars are set far away from his driveway, where they exit and enter, so the signs are actually almost all the way up the South Road, and then they're spaced out, so they're not on top of each other, so you see the first one, then you see the second one, and the, the third one, it's not in our zone where the cones are at, but it, it's right after, you know, as soon as you see the third one, then the cones start setting up to divert the traffic over, so I can get three lanes out of one or two. The other end, I can set them out a little further down, because there's more area to put them out there, coming from North Kingston, it's tougher at the other end, because of the way that road is, and then you got all those driveways, you don't wanna stick a sign in somebody's driveway.
Now, I ask about that, because it seems like that's a, and you picked up the cost of that, did you?
Yes, I did, I picked up the cost, yes, I brought him.
I mean, that, that, that's a good faith effort, to try to minimize the, the issues that Scoop and his group face, and for the safety of people that are traveling, it's just, we all know it's such a not ideal road, and you can't, just happens to be where you bought your house, which is lovely, but I just remember that corner, coming down from South Road, when I was four years old, and in my parents' car, and it's sideswiped, and the car rolled over, there's nothing to do, there's no display, nothing to do, there was no display, it was just a Navy man trying to get back to Quonset, he was going way too fast, anyway, it's a dangerous, it's just a dangerous road.
I have a question, who makes the call if it gets too dangerous, too many people?
State police called me twice last year, actually, both times, I wasn't actually working the detail.
Was anybody working?
Oh, yeah, there were people there, I had my constables there, I wasn't actually working it, I got called by the state police, and then one of my constables called me, so I rushed to get there, and when I saw what was happening, I shut it down, I told my guys, shut it down, then I let Mr. Gemma know what I did, and we tried to get everybody out of the area, to disperse everybody, so we could get the traffic flowing again, I think last year, we tried to set it up again, once everybody was dispersed, and it looked like it was calm again, as soon as we reopened, it happened again, I mean, almost instantly, 'cause I think people were waiting to see if we opened it again, that's what happened, so I had to shut it down again, and then another Saturday, I shut it down, and we didn't reopen, I said, that's it, we're not reopening again.
Both times, I think we closed at six thirty and seven, but those two Santa nights.
Yeah.
There was no incident on Halloween, and I remember there was really no backup at Halloween.
Those are the Santa nights.
Yes.
Santa night, those are the two.
And you've just told us for the record.
You're not gonna.
No, no Santa.
Santa's coming, but he's not telling.
He's a random.
Santa just might say it, but don't, you know.
That's pretty much what we would do, that, I think that would eliminate, the Saturday problems that we had were anticipation of gifts and Santa, so that just can't be done.
I mean, people were, I mean, they were already lined up, they, they knew what they were there for.
And I've been driving by, not on a weekend, and there's traffic there, and I go, I say to myself, oh, I wish Scoop or some detail was here, because it's at night, and there's cars, you know, stopped or U-turning, or just doing the foolishness that people do, and is there any way to have it on Thursday, like, anytime that it's dark?
I mean, we, Scoop and I talk probably once a day, or maybe once every couple of times a day, to make it determination whether the weather pattern, we closed quite a bit in December for weather, just wind, okay, so, we're talking all the time, I would, you know, would open it up if, you know, if we had a constant issue on a Thursday night.
Okay.
And we monitor, I monitor during the week, when he doesn't actually have us there at night, it's usually on the weekends, when we start getting closer to Christmas, that he actually has the detail out there, 'cause more and more people are out getting into the Christmas spirit, I guess, but during the week, we're not usually there, I'll monitor, and I'll come through at night sometimes, just to see how the flow is going, but, I mean, it's heavy Friday, Saturday, and sometimes Sunday, but usually on Sunday, it ends relatively quickly, 'cause most of the kids are getting out to go to school the next day.
I do watch it, so if it, you know, I don't, if I see it backing up on the road, that's when I realize there's an issue, but I, I don't really see that during the week.
Okay.
What do you do if, if you see it backing up on the road?
I mean, there's not much you can really do, but, you know, we just, you know, at that point, we just go and I'll talk and have to bring them in, but, I can't really go out there and direct traffic, but I don't see it, other than a Friday, Saturday night, and then Santa was the main, number one issue, even Friday nights are flowing, they're constantly flowing, I can't stop the person that's not thinking, and does, you know, even on South Road without my display, people get active.
You have a percentage of those people, we can call them, whatever you wanna call them, everywhere, and everything, doing everything, it's just out there.
He's gotta, you know, be able to be a proper driver, but I can't stop that.
Like, I wish we had our electric signs, Rob, the, because we could put them up and say, slow down, something, or.
That Scoop could use those.
Yes.
Well, thank God, you know, Rob lets me use, all those cones are highway departments, I mean, I don't have any cones, I only have a few in the car, but.
Oh, we do, they came in, you have them?
We're gonna use them for Christmas.
I'm sorry, we'll keep.
We'll use them for Christmas.
They're ready to work, yes.
Yeah, but that wouldn't be something that you'd wanna leave up for the whole, the whole term, right, I mean.
But maybe on a weekend, like, drag it out on a Friday or a Thursday.
But who are you gonna have doing that now, I don't, I don't have a truck that can pull up on a sign board?
Is it Rob, Rob's?
Are we gonna start, am I gonna get him constableized, they put him to work?
No, I don't want him constableized, but, can you have a partner, he had a, bringing it out there for a couple of busy weekends and picking it up?
I believe we could.
It would be nice.
It'd have to be, like, in no business hours, I wouldn't do overtime enough.
Right, you'd have to put him out there maybe, like, Friday, Friday during the day, when he's got his guys working, and then, maybe you can give me.
Don't put the sign in front of Jim's house.
With councils.
This guy will not go over well.
No, I imagine it either further down near Bald Hill, and maybe, like, near the fire station, or Delma, I don't know where a good place is to put it over there, but just to warn people, like, I don't know.
Well, I, like I said, if council wishes me to do that, I would do it, but maybe we should have a discussion of what to say, where they'd be placed, there's a lot of questions.
Right.
But absolutely, they're open and ready to work, the signs, they're fully functional, registered and insured.
Placed, I would.
Well, we can sit down and discuss that, 'cause I think one should be on the town line, North Kingston, and actually, just over the line, in Exeter, when you're entering, and then the other one would have to be somewhere down, probably near the golf course, 'cause you need. Because you need an area one, you can see it. I don't want it on a curve. And I want it off the road enough where it's not gonna get hit either. But it still needs to be visible.
I'd like to raise one more question. Someone commented to me that, and then it's wonderful, but it's huge. And I wondered, does that not cause some backup as people are driving through because there's so much for them to see? Which leads me to my question. Are you adding anything this year?
Nothing to add. Actually, I lost quite a few last year.
I was just gonna say, did you take anything? Oh, I mean, if people, when I driven through a couple of times on off hours, there's a lot, you know, going on, and I just keep driving, but not everybody, people gotta stop. And that's gotta cause backup on onto the street.
It does. It does. We've actually had to walk in there and tell people to keep moving, because they'll stop and start videotaping.
There's a couple of people that just take a long time. I don't.
Can in between the Christmas musics, you could say, move along? Don't, don't make illegal U-turns on the water, too?
It's hard to do because it's connected to the light show.
Okay.
So it's all like synced, so I can't.
Maybe you can sing it.
I wish I could do that.
But you've answered your not add.
No, there's nothing to ask.
And you might even have lost one.
We lost many, actually.
I'm sorry.
It's part of the win. Limited customer win would take out. It's pretty expensive.
Any other questions, Senator Council? I have one individual signed up to speak, Alretta Converse. Ah, stand up, and you gotta let them know your name so we can.
I'm Alretta Converse, and I'm in Brookridge Drive. I am, it's so nice to meet Mr. Gemma, the man behind the inflatable that we all see. It's such a beautiful, it's just such a creative, unique experience. And, and his passion for breast cancer research is personally really meaningful to me. You know, I don't think there's a woman alive that doesn't feel the threat of that over her or have a family member or someone she knows impacted by it. So really, some of the cause behind that. And fun stuff for kids, you know, that's great. It started, I think, during COVID, and it was just wonderful to have a place for kids to go and experience that. Though I have to say that as time has gone on, I feel like it's gotten very large. And it's, I have some concerns about it that I would just appreciate being heard tonight.
I thought there was a "but" coming.
But those other things are very true.
Of course.
102 is a scenic byway. It's a beautiful, beautiful road. We're relatively new in town compared to many other people. We've been here almost four years now and love Exeter and love its rural character. I've been sitting in on the comprehensive plan meetings and how many signs it comes up that people love. I'm not the only one who loves Exeter and its rural character and really want to see that preserved. And I feel like the holiday display is kind of going in the opposite direction of preserving that rural character for Exeter, particularly because it happens to be on our scenic byway, our main thoroughfare of beauty. And I think my other concern is that it's operating what could be considered a business in a residential setting where the infrastructure, I think that we've kind of heard that, infrastructure of the road is just not suited for a production of that length of time and that volume of people. There's, it's less than ideal, and there's workarounds that are, that are having to be accomplished to make it work. And living on Brookridge, which is right off of New Road, it impacts my neighbors and our, and our quality of life during what seems to be a really long period of time, starting Christmas and now it's Halloween. And it's, you know, almost three months of workarounds through a very critical transit route for us. I was looking at, I'll cut to the chase. Right, I just think that it's clear that Exeter is a small town with limited resources. And, and this is a long time period that this is going on for, and I'm not sure it's the best use of town resources. Even though the cause is wonderful and it's a great event, it's difficult to have it in the place where it's at with no turn lane and in a place where the, the detail helps, but doesn't, doesn't, the infrastructure is just not suited. It's a private driveway that you're trying to make into more of a commercial, commercial driveway, commercial entryway. So I would request that the committee decline this request and to move the event to a more suitable location. Thank you very much.
Any other comment from the public?
Mary Beth Knoyer. I live on 45 Daley Pond Road. I would respectfully disagree with the previous comments. I think that some days I feel like I live in a town that's just a plot of land. We have very little community involvement, and this is an opportunity to see something really great and wonderful. I think we need more community involvement. I think the examples of listing over and over the multitude of vacancies demonstrates over and over the lack of community involvement and getting to know the town and what it has. And we have this wonderful opportunity to do this, seize it, and do it in a way. Every time that these people have asked, you know, had anything to challenge them, they've stepped up to the plate. You want more signs? We'll do it at our own expense. You want lease? We'll do it at our own expense. So I think there's a way to meet in the middle. It's not, he's not running a business. I don't see any commercialism. I think he's just offering something genuine. And I would have to say that beyond that, this isn't just about a bunch of little kids going to see some inflatables. This represents a cause that probably has touched every person in this room. They raise money, they raise awareness, and we can't lose sight of that either. So I would respectfully ask that this be considered. And if there's some middle ground, then let there be some middle ground. But I would not just dismiss the whole thing because it's an inconvenience at some points in time. I would, I would, you know, they talk about the signs. Place the signs strategically so you have one before anybody even goes down 102, so they have the option, oh, that right, this is going on. I'll go down Route 2 and cut over somewhere. Or put it before South Road so that people know, if I go forward, I may hit a crowd, but there are options. There are ways to turn off and be diverted from the traffic. So there is lots of options, but we don't throw away something really great and wonderful just because there are some hiccups. I think, I think we have people who are really willing to meet any requirements and have demonstrated that. So I would ask that you do consider it. Thank you.
I'll just end this. We have raised $165,000 for the Gloria Gervais Cancer Foundation. I don't know the exact figures because the foundation's not here to speak to it, but there are direct Exeter residents that get help from the foundation. I can probably get that number for you if you wanted it. So it does have a significant impact on the foundation, and we're very appreciative of that. But more importantly, and, you know, as important maybe, it affects families. I encourage anyone to, if we were able to approve it this year, to come there, sit on the front porch, maybe have a drink, and watch the people that come through. It affects families in a way that you can't even imagine. Like, families don't drive together. Because of COVID, they did drive together. I am not trying to inconvenience anyone. I really am. I really am not. We're not trying to offend anybody. We're just, we are doing it from our heart. It may look like a business. It's not a business. Believe me, I tell you, my wife and I get up every day, setting up two hours a day, setting up, setting up these inflatables. And we have, I think there's a South Kingston bus or Exeter, there's a full buses of kids that come through. During the day, there are full buses of nursing homes that come through. There are things that happen that maybe you can't connect to, and I know you only see, you hear some of the bad stuff. But the most significant things, when you see a nursing home and handicapped people coming through and so happy and elated in a, in a bus from a nursing home or assisted living center, it's a magical thing. And, you know, I would love to be able to have you all experience that feeling. It's hard to do unless you're there. But I assure you that, you know, the only thing that, you know, it's like a business, we're literally working it between, you know, in the morning, two hours a day to set everything up. And at night, it's two hours to break it down. And, you know, it's a significant amount of work. You know, we can do a lot of other stuff with our time, which, you know, we work hard. But this is a significant amount of work to do. And I, I think it brings more community, I have to agree, more than you ever realize. It affects, it, I hate to, you know, confuse anything, but if Exeter were to embrace it and, you know, kind of do things from it because of it, because you're getting the traffic here. You know, some farms can do things at night, you know, I don't want to freak everybody out and add more things, but it could be, there are towns that embrace, they become the Christmas town, and they become this huge mecca, right? Exeter, Exeter is known as, is world renowned for what? And I said, I think I said last year, vampires. We're the, we're the US capital for vampires, but no one embraces it. No one does anything about it. But yet Salem has $2 million a year coming to the town coffers by embracing witches. Because they're, you know, they've made it something. I don't think they degrade it. If you go to Salem, it's a pretty, it's a pretty neat thing. Exeter can do that, but I don't want, I don't like to talk about too many commercialization because it freaks everybody out. I know that it wants to be rural, but in the same token, it can be rural and respectful. And I think that we try to do that. This is not, the significant aspect of what people feel, you have to be there to feel, to see it. You have to be and see those families magical and the kids, it's not just kids, it's adults. Many adults come through. But many, you know, we probably have more adults come through than kids. You may not realize that, but there are, like, you know, husband and wife. You know, maybe a grandmother, grandfather brings a child, you know, a grandson or granddaughter. It's like, there's a lot more stuff happening than just, you know, this blow-up carnival kind of thing. It's more than that.
What percentage of your donations are collected for Halloween versus the overall?
It's probably 60 Christmas, 40 for.
So it's that high, 40%?
Yeah, Halloween, Halloween significantly. There were, there were no incidents and backups in Halloween that I know of. As a matter of fact, we, you know, probably only used the police detail one weekend on Halloween. There was nothing, there was no issue. So it's really, we're talking about Christmas. And if you really were to drill it down, it's really the Santa night. When people know Santa's gonna be able to get free presents, that's what drove it. We just limited that. So you think it's gonna solve, mostly solve itself? It may not be perfect. You may have some random person that wants to make an illegal U-turn. I can't, I can't stop that. But there are accidents at South Road without any display up. It's just people making stupid.
We had them right out in front, too, last year, because there were two rescues out there.
Two, two years ago, that's right.
Or whenever it was, mutually.
Yep. That was, that happened two years ago. That's correct. But that's someone that's not paying attention. I don't, I don't know how to, they could turn into a town hall and have an accident. Just if someone behind them is not paying attention, I don't know what to say to that. I don't know how to.
It's a busy road.
It is a busy road. It is a busy road. But, I mean, if I was in a residential neighborhood, it would probably be worse. People would be driving, you know, through a residential neighborhood. There's many, many displays happen, you know, this is one of, I think, 65 displays in, in Rhode Island. I mean, I'm not, I'm not the only person doing a display. Maybe we're doing a bigger display, but not, we're not probably the biggest display. We're probably up there, though, in the state, just to be honest.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to close the public hearing. All in favor? Everybody make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
For the amended hours?
Amended hours for the, on Thursday, Monday through, or Sunday through Thursday, nine to nine, Friday and Saturday, nine to 10. For the public entertainment license application, I'm into Gemma, for holiday displays at Halloween and Christmas.
I'd just like to add to that for Mr. Gavert to work with Sco on all the details. Second for the motions. Second. Any discussions? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Foes?
Mr. Gemma?
Yes.
$124.49 owed for advertising and search of man.
Okay, I'll drop that tomorrow. I think he said check at the beginning, all right?
Yeah, for the application.
Oh, that's a good one. So it's $124, what?
$49. When you get here.
Tomorrow. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, next up, number eight, public comment. The comments are not limited to items on this agenda. However, items not on this agenda will only be heard and not acted upon by the town council unless they are of emergency nature. Three-minute time limit per person, 15 minutes maximum tied allowed for this agenda item. We have one person signed up for a public comment, Ethan Davis.
Good. Fox Sealing rep is former DPW director Matzcek. He's the one who was running Rippel Vendor League at the same time, resigning in three days of his Ethics Club launch. Before he quit, he went on a trip to North Carolina Golfers' Art with Tony Garrel, Beta Group, and fellow Vendor League officer. Matzcek paid about $5,000 for that trip on a town credit card. Since it wasn't town business, he was supposed to repay this. For Cal, that deal was sanctioned, although it violated both Rhode Island and federal tax law. He never got repaid for town financial records. This travel and spending, plus another $42,000 spent on travel for family and friends, was a subject of calls for investigation one, two, and three, quietly dropped by the council with no results to report as required by state law. Before he quit, violation of federal, state, and local purchasing law, Matzcek awarded a $44,000 contract to Beta for GPS mapping and more than twice the cost of a $21,000 Verdantis bid, but Verdantis wasn't a member of Steve's Vendor Leagues like Beta. This was in call for investigation 11, also dropped by the council with no results. When he quit, the council gave Matzcek an extra $22.6K personal payment over what he was due by Town Benefits contract. His shingle waste blending project was done without any engineering or required permits from DOT and D E M. That one may have contributed to a serious collision death resulting from, from a report included in call for investigation 7, again dropped by the council with no results. If Beta is the new DPW engineering company, maybe you can have them review this and respond. When someone's lying, the story changes when met by the truth. Recall Ellison's treasurer-director roles. Recall Matzcek and the D E M's salt shed stormwater reports, Reynolds Trust driving through the streams and wetlands clearing. It's happening now with Fox Sealing. No surprise with the same cast of characters. Fox Sealing is meant to replace layer hydrocarbons in asphalt called malteens, which are lost over time, making pavement hard and brittle. Per the Ripwood print Shappy herd, they now want people to try putting it on new pavement. This is a criminally stupid idea because it will make stopping distances worse and increase hydroplanning. Safe pavement depends on some of those surface malteens disappearing for proper tire grip, like California, Tennessee, Washington, and a number of other states found the same. Now the story changes, and the idea is to put it on top of roadways recently chip sealed. This is still stupid. Malteens need to soak into the oxidized asphalt to do their job. The chip seal coating will prevent that. Steve's quoted $1.10 per square yard, not including Beta's supervisor cost. This will put more money in his pocket, so if that's what you're trying to do, mission accomplished. But it will have a negative return for taxpayers. Matzcek's proven multiple times that he lies before the council, the D E M, and the Ethics Commission. The town spent well into the six figures on his garage D E M violations with no end in sight. He's demonstrated multiple times he puts personal gain over public safety in the interest. You want to take anything he and his vendor pals say seriously? This isn't Charlie Brown and Lucy Football. If this was federal or state, based on his past record, he'd be barred from bidding. With two sitting council members admitted ethics violators, I guess we can't expect that in our town. Thank you.
Okay, next is new business, RMA, block sealing and preservation technique. Cal, would you answer this?
You want to give me a couple of seconds?
Yeah.
Yeah, council, let me just say this, to you. You know, we had a presentation made to us last month, and a request by Rob Shatby to receive bids for this process, which I know nothing about. But he indicated to us that he felt it was something we should pursue. So we voted to go out to bid. But he indicated to us that he felt it was something we should pursue, so, uh, we voted to go out to bid. We didn't vote to accept any bid that we might get, but we did, we're exploring. But then, a couple, I guess it was a couple of weeks later, the date, but then, then this article appeared as a, as a so-called editorial, another bad DPW idea in Exeter, and this is what I thought, council, for my sake, I can't speak for the rest of you, but for my sake, I, I felt the need for some more exploration of this issue. So I reached out to someone to whom I'd never spoken, uh, Joe, I think, was his name, is his name, from Beta Engineering. We had quite a conversation, and I asked him if, if he could speak to us. We have hired him to do work here in town to, to review the status of our roads, if I understand this correctly. The contract we have with Beta, which I think is significant, since we have about a hundred miles of secondary roads. So, meaning this, and, and not, not to mention the reference to me, which, you know, that's, Davis is, you know, he can speak to whatever he wants, uh, for sure. But I just think, I'd like to know more about this, so I invited, uh, someone from Beta to come, but I don't know.
Yeah, we're fully here.
Are you?
There's two of us, I'm Anthony Garrel, there's a girl.
Oh, Anthony, oh, Joe, you, you and I spoke on the phone.
Yes, correct.
So, I, I'm not sure if you have, I just brought this with me, because I, we spoke about this article, I don't know whether you oversaw it. But I, I just, well, I'm just gonna pass you a copy, if, if you might be interested to see what an editorial, uh, and interesting, may I just say that it was not signed, it looked as if it was a, an editorial piece, but clearly wasn't written by the editor of the paper. But maybe there's a connection there that I'm not aware of. So, anyway, here's a, here's a copy, Chris, would you just pass that to the gentleman? So, if the council would indulge me, and I'm not sure if you'd like to know more about it, maybe, you know.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, yes.
So, Joe or Tony?
No, I'll be speaking this evening.
Would you, uh, you know, I, I didn't speak to you, but I spoke to.
Right, and I relayed our conversation back to Tony, yep.
I appreciate it, I appreciate it. So, thank you for just coming tonight and telling us something about this process.
Well, one thing, if I may, thank you for inviting us in tonight. Anthony Garrel, uh, senior vice president with Beta Group, and then Joe McGuire, uh, lead asset management specialist with Beta. Joe and I have been working together for seven years, and I've been doing pavement management for over twenty, uh, throughout New England, including, um, about eighteen towns in Rhode Island, right?
Uh, twenty, no.
Twenty towns in Rhode Island. So we work with a, a variety of towns, uh, in developing pavement management programs, and that's something we haven't started. We don't have a contract yet, as far as I know, to conduct the inspections of the roads. And that's really where it all starts, with evaluating the roads, providing the town with a tool to make decisions like you're talking about tonight, in terms of the different treatments and where, how the roadway should be classified based on their condition. There's a lot to it, there's a science to it, which, um, has not been started yet, I just want to make sure that that's clear, that we haven't started the project yet.
Not here at Exeter, but you've been doing it elsewhere.
Throughout New England, yeah, that's correct.
Throughout New England?
Correct.
You know, I don't mean, I don't mean to stop you, I'm sorry, I apologize to you, but I'd like to know more, and so if you don't want me to speak, please tell me to stop.
Don't stop.
So, it, as part of the process, we'll be looking at all the different treatments, so each roadway will be scored, zero to one hundred, zero being the worst, one hundred being the best. There's different banding, uh, major rehab, minor rehab, um, preventative maintenance, routine maintenance, and roads that don't require anything, um, at that point in time. But, uh, I think the treatment you're referring to is a preventative maintenance or preservation treatment, which we do see communities use, um, in New England, so it is something commonly used. And, uh, but that is to be determined, once we do our assessment, then we'll determine which roadways, um, would be classified as such. Typically, if a road's been done, say, an improvement's been made within the last three to five years, that would be a road that could be a candidate.
Do you mind if I interrupt now and then, because I haven't, I didn't speak to you, but I spoke to, uh, Joe, so.
And Joe works for me, so that's fine.
All right, he explained that. Uh, I know, we talked about Hopkins Hill Road, which I, I travel maybe once a week, and it seems like it was properly prepared, unlike, oh, see, I've lived here forever, and all the dirt roads that I used to bike on and so forth are now, they're, they're asphalted. But they weren't properly constructed, because we didn't really have the means or the engineering ability and so forth. But, uh, as the gentleman said, that's the kind of road for preservation purposes that you might want to address. I mean, that's what Rob and I, Rob explained that to us here last month, and.
And that, and that would be the, really, the goal of the project would be to assess all the roads in town, I think eighty-five miles, the roadways in town, so if eighty-five miles a road, each section of road will be evaluated, and then, you know, for instance, it could be a roadway that scores a ninety, which would be a road that's in good condition, and that could be a good candidate for a preservation or preventative maintenance like fog seal, for instance.
And fog sealing is not fog on the road, will you explain that to us, what it is?
It's a treat, it's a liquid treatment.
And how long does it preserve the road or extend the life of the road?
And, and it's a good point, so the goal of it is to extend the life of the road, maximize the community's dollars, and that's why preservation is so important. So you're looking at from three to five years of, of extension that you provide to a road.
Percentage of life is that added to, what's an average life of a road?
So now, um, it used to be twenty-five to thirty years, now it's in the fifteen to twenty years, but it also depends on the treatment. So if you're gonna do a, a major rehab or reconstruction or reclamation, you're adding more life years to the road.
So that's twenty percent-ish additional life to the road, is that, well, I'm ready with quick math?
In, in terms of a preservation-type treatment, um, I would say so.
The percentage of the cost is that compared to replacing the road, like, it was like fifteen years prior?
So if you were to do, for instance, there's a, um, a whole menu of treatments with different unit prices. So the more, the, the worst condition the road is in, the wor, the higher the cost is going to be to improve that roadway. So you could be going from a, um, preventative maintenance technique, which could be crack sealing, for instance, which could be in the fifty cents to a dollar per square yardage range. Um, fog seal could be in the range of, say, a dollar to two dollars, um, and that range is what we typically see, it's typically around a dollar fifty per square yard for that.
What about motoris safety? There's a, the article here that was in the paper, I think they all wrote it, but it brings up some, some concerns that, you know, you want to address. As far as safety, making the road slippery, slippery or wet, slippery or dry, slippery in any condition, is it, is it make it any slipperier at all, or is it, is it lose safety? Is it lose grip and, and, is it not as porous anymore, does the water drain like it would have?
Well, the, the purpose of the, um, the treatment is to seal the road, so to prevent water from infiltrating into the pavement. Because once you get water underneath, that's when you're gonna have the issues, the more expensive potholes, cracking, alligator cracking, moncholine.
Just, I'm just asking only safety, not, I asked for road repair or shortening the length of the, length of the road, I'm just asking about motoris safety. Does this lessen motoris safety under any conditions?
Uh, I can't comment on that, I don't have that information for me tonight. I do know that when you do the treatment, that you do need to wait until it's actually dried or cured before you drive on it. But I don't have information like that, like, we can look, we can look into that.
How long does it take, you know?
It, it's, I know, um, typically thirty minutes would be a, sort of, to cure before driving on it. But it really depends on the type of fog seal and also the type of road.
Humidity, temperature, all that.
Exactly, there's so many factors that go into that.
Is that something you could get for us before we vote on this? I mean, not tonight, but.
Yeah, we, we can look into that, you know, but we're still, we're not, we're not under contract yet.
That, that's the thing, uh, we approved that contract last month.
Yeah, it's, it's waiting for Jim just to okay some final critiques within, in charges?
No. Yeah, but it, it come up with, so, okay, anyway.
We're talking about what we.
Continue, sir.
Yeah, I mean, that would be it, really, I mean, we're, we're, we're to the point now where, where we want to get, we'd like, we're excited to work with you and help you make your decisions on your treatments moving forward.
I had met with Gordon Rogers probably a month ago, and I guess Foster's already signed up with that man and stuff, and they showed me how it was scored, so. Basically, before we move ahead, awarding a bid for fog seal, wait till this is in place, then it's different. That's where we probably be right now.
You know, I just wanted to comment, since, again, exploring our idea with Mike's question about safety. If, if a road newly constructed or, or made to some sort of code, if there is code, I should think there would be a, a buildup so that the drainage, so the water runs across to the sides if it's properly constructed. I, I, I'm just guessing that there was a lot of engineering, I hope, I think, there was engineering put into Hopkins Hill Road, so that, so drainage issues could be mitigated, I, I, I hope that's the case. I mean, if you're concerned if the water's, you know, running off to the sides.
And it's not just drainage either, it's, it's, is it, do we lose any safety for the motors? Is it any, the grip, the, the friction, is, is any of that go away, where, that's what it refers to in this, and so that's a concern. So I, I think we should, we should see if he can come up with something for us, and if we delay it just one month before a vote, I think safety is, is important. And just, we don't want to push it through if we're not sure, and I have uncertainty. That's just me talking personally.
Well, I, I just only, my only observation, I hear you, uh, when a road is better constructed, as is Hopkins Hill Road, the traffic goes a whole lot faster than we used to, would probably add to, I hope there hasn't been any issues, and I haven't heard of any over the, of accidents, but that's good. You know, so I guess the more you improve the road, the more there could be concern, well, I, I.
But are there, do you know numbers about hydroplaning on untreated surfaces?
Nothing that we could present to them.
Okay.
That would be something that we could present as part of our project when the time is right.
Yeah.
We need data, we need to collect the information, identify the appropriate roads, and then that's when we'll make recommendations.
I imagine that municipalities, no matter if we do it or not, they're not getting this, and many, like, I looked this up when it, when it came across our desk. Municipalities all over the country use this technique, and if there was a safety concern, I didn't need any red flags about them. You know, are there chances or are there circumstances where things might change a little bit, somebody didn't do something the right way, and then it created a safety concern? Probably, certainly, but we're hoping and putting our faith in anyone that's doing anything to our road, that they're doing it correctly, and that they would, you know, not put lives at risk.
Are you comfortable with, with waiting a little while to see if we can get information, more information to make us feel more comfortable?
Well, this is just an informational, um.
Well, we do have it on the agenda.
Yeah, but that's the next agenda item.
And again, the reason I asked the gentleman to come in is because I knew that it was going to appear as new business tonight, and I for one felt the need to have some, some more information delivered to us, which is why I reached out to have these gentlemen come in. And, and only because, as you, you said, I just want to know once again that you represent or you work for a number of communities here in Rhode Island.
Yes.
Did you just say it's up to?
It's, uh, we're actually north of a hundred and eighty in New England.
In New England, yes.
And all, and all the programs work with rural towns, suburban, urban, um, they're all different, and they, they have different approaches. Like here, in, in Exeter, the program here will be distinctly different than, say, the city of Providence, you know, so it'll be definitely different based on the rural care, the, you mentioned rural care earlier. So, so you have that aspect that you have to consider as well, the types of treatments that you consider, traffic calming, you know, there's things like that that we're gonna talk to you about. And, um, that, that's part of the project that we haven't started yet.
I just want to say to Rob, our new DPW director, and talking with him post our last meeting, again, having more conversations with him, he's, he's so, he's so sincere about, I know he keep, he kept using the word preservation and saving all the investment we've already made.
Exactly, yeah, and that, that's key, you know, we, we had the public preservation forum back in the, back in the spring.
That's where I got the information, and as director of public works, roadways are my responsibility, and absolute preservation of a new road is, is my responsibility, as well as bringing the bad road to good. So that's why it's, you know, these different techniques, I'm, I'm, I'm excited about having engineers involved with the town, and that's what is so important about our program, um, and they can help us go the right direction, safety-wise and longevity, and get the most out of the money that's spent here on our roadways, and that's my goal, simply.
Professional roadway engineer advice.
Yeah, so we're gonna have a lot of detail to present, once all the roads are inspected, the different conditions, the distresses, the lengths, the widths, you know, drainage. We have all the drainage maps, which is very beneficial to your pavement management program.
Okay, so, I gotta be careful because we're to discuss it, it's not on your agenda, so.
Okay. Pavement programs, um, which under fog sealing, preservation technique.
Okay. You got a card?
I do, yeah.
Can I have one, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming, and I appreciate it.
Sure.
Anthony, how much time do we expect to get some info on the safety of the fog seal?
Well, soon, we, we need to be under contract to provide you with information.
That's just a formality at this point, right?
I'm waiting for, well, we're waiting right.
It's, it's in council's hands, all you gotta do is approve it.
I'm, I'm sorry. You mean we did that already?
I don't think so.
Jim, he's on vacation.
Jim's, there's more.
There was some insurance questions that are fixed by Beta, and then it's.
We haven't gotten the new contract with the corrections.
Just waiting on, on you guys.
The solicitor, no, the solicitor, Jim is on vacation, that's all.
And he can make the changes here.
The changes are made, you're just waiting for Jim to look at it and okay it.
Gotcha.
That's it.
Now, I need, I need to be clar, I need clarification, because you, you spoke about doing the assessment that will follow once a contract is approved, which we can't talk about, but it's, it's something that's gonna happen, I think, because we're moving in that direction. So now, now it sounded to me as if you might do an assessment and then come back and tell us when or where this might be appropriate? Or is that, did I understand that correctly?
We can do that, or, or we can work on, on the roadways that he has identified.
Okay, because I was gonna say that there, that's my question, there are roadways that, that you know, that you can advise or whatever, that are already appropriate for this technique, am I right?
Yeah, we can get, what we can do is get eyes on those roads, uh, before doing all the, the complete assessment across the town.
You're good, thank you, sir.
Oh, I have one more question, are there times of the year that you can do fog sealing, like you can't pave in the wintertime? So the fog sealing is the same thing?
Yeah, ideally, um, crack sealing, fog sealing, those type of treatments are better in the spring and fall.
Okay.
I'd not stay away from the hotter, the hotter months.
Good.
I'm good.
All right, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thanks for coming. Thank you very much.
Okay, next up, Department of Public Works awarding a bid fog seal using asphalt motions. There won't be motions. I'm gonna make a motion to continue this item till we get more information.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Okay, Department of Public Works awarding a bid solid waste recycling hauling services.
You're up, Rob. We had two bids on this particular service, and I, I'm gonna recommend the Eddie Briggs, twenty years of service, my recommendation, and substantially less per haul. Not even going up much from what we're doing right now. It's pretty much across the board.
You had some reservations, about five-year contract?
Well, I, um, I seen it. That's what they offered. I, I put that through. It's really council's opinion there. Three, five years, I don't.
I believe with the objective state law allows for three-year contracts or two renewals.
Okay.
So it's a three-year contract, two renewal.
What's it, two?
Three-year contracts is more than, and then you can do an additional two years of individual renewals.
At the end of the three years, at the end of the three years. So we do, we approve for three years.
With two, I would say with two renewal.
Okay.
And then at the end of the third year, the fourth year, you have to do another renewal, and the fifth year, do another renewal. Then six year, about a year.
And this covers their costs, so they're not going to come back?
No, due surcharge is, it's included.
Yeah. What's ever?
The, right now, they're, you add a, like, say, two fifty plus twelve percent, or whatever the specifics are.
Right.
So, um, my guess is that's all included at today's fuel rates, and so. Who knows if it goes up to ten dollars a gallon, you'd have to do that, or any contractor would have to put a few dollars on.
Should come to us and ask.
Right, but to answer your question, Olivia, yes, that's, that's where it's at, solid number, no percentages.
Yeah. Barring any big fluctuation that might affect everyone.
Right.
Nothing else that, that we have to?
Is that included? The two surcharges included in this?
It was added one for surcharge and not due.
The last one? This, this one?
Yeah.
Is that, it's in here somewhere?
It should be right in that page, isn't it? Not, not in this, but the, it should be, it's under the surcharge. So where you can pass through.
Can somebody show me what it says? I don't know what you mean.
I don't see a surcharge.
With the request that the cost of diesel fuel increase or decreases more than twenty-five percent, the town and our company would have the option to renegotiate.
Yeah, there is.
Thank you.
I thought I read it.
Pretty much the same thing as what's been happening, right?
Right, but it is there.
So it's not, it's not in, as was the point you made. Thank you. That's their base price. It's going there off of that.
Do I make a motion? Uh, I'll make a motion to award Edward F. Free's disposal a three-year contract with the option to redo in year four and year five. Second, any discussion?
Yeah, well, yes, because they asked that, that the, that a clause be added to the contract. You're not, you're not discussing that clause right now?
It's basically what they did a couple.
Well, they're, yeah, they're just asking.
Was it twenty-five percent?
Twenty-five percent is a big increase, like, are we going to have another one of these big increases? Who knows?
You're talking like a dollar twenty-five a gallon right now, or if it's twenty-five percent.
Maybe adding there as of the price today.
They were, they're asking, it's fair, you look at the other guy, he's a hell of a lot more, it's not double, it's.
It almost does.
No, I think it's fair. No, it's fair, yeah. And it's not like if it goes up five cents, we have to renegotiate.
Right. Based on, I'll admit my emotion, based on the fuel prices of, because today's September fifth, two thousand and thirty.
I'm not objecting to adding this clause, by the way, I just ask you if you feel it should be added because they're asking for it today. And it seems to me that they're saying, can you give us the option?
Because basically, this, what were they, two fifty a turn, you said?
We shall plus the twelve.
Yeah, I think they're getting like thirteen or fourteen dollars more, which is what we gave them. So basically, they're at the same price for it now. Will we give that a little bit for the fuel?
It's all right. No, I, I just, they say they're requesting a clause be added, and I wondered if you wanted to consider.
I think it's appropriate to work with your vendors when they're string.
So, I mean, my only point is to your motion, which I'm objective, I didn't know if you might want to amend it to include this clause.
Just so there's no surprise.
It's not, it's not understood, is what he's saying.
Yeah. I'll also amend it to include, include the language on page three of five of their cost proposal. That works, eh? It's a whole thing. That'll be, that'll be what the contract's based upon, so. Because it breaks down everything, so. That work, Cal?
Yeah.
Okay. You want to amend, or you want a second amendment?
Second amendment motion, okay, there we go.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Has a good job on that, Cal.
I.
Okay. Department of Public Works request for bid extension to ring ring asphalt. This has been extended once before. My feeling is, put it out to bid. And there's a second reason to put this out to bid, to give the visual that is now the Director of Sales for this company, and was employed by this town, and has only been gone from here for about nine months. So I don't think it's right extending a bid when we have a former employee that's working for this company. If we state law with the state employees, they can't do work. They've left for a year, so.
I think that's Exeter too, it's a year we have it.
I don't think we have it in there.
I write it somewhere.
Only for elected officials, or appointed officials, so.
Well, he was appointed because he was, he's subject to all.
You can't work for the town until after a year.
Yeah.
But I'm saying, this is kind of like a revolving door thing. It was extended once. I believe we extended it last year, but now this individual is the Director of Sales for this company. Yeah. Do you need a motion to, to put that up to bid?
Sure.
So.
Second. And then my only question is, if they're the only ones that come back with a bid.
Alright, if I'm solicitor, yeah, that way we do it the right way.
Yep.
Any other discussion?
Well, no, but that, no, I understand what you're saying, except extending it at the price it's there. And maybe saying, oh, fine, well, then who come back and we'll leave it at a considerably lower price. But maybe others will be there as well.
That is a risk, correct.
Yeah.
There's more than one, there's more than one company that does this type of work too, so.
No, that's fine.
Do you think that this is gonna go up significantly when we?
There's no way to tell. I mean, with the price of fuel and all that affects it, so.
Yeah.
It all comes down to that. I would say it's not gonna go down, but. I don't know. Put it out there in a fair way, I think that's the right move.
Wait, I had a thought. Oh, yes, here's my, no, here's my thought. We've had discussion in the last, over several nights, about the extent to which RFPs are advertised. I know we've talked about this, and just for the record, Lynn, I know you, you said, could be speed once again for the record, that these, these RFPs are, like, this one that we're voting on now, are on, are accessed in a number of ways, and I think.
Yeah, they're posted on the website with the specs. They're posted at the library, the post office here, and, and advertised.
Yeah, good. I mean, and, well, you also told us that you get inquiries from.
Yes.
RST when people see this for different issues.
Yeah, I always get inquiries as to how many bids were received and what prices were, but from across the country, from different companies.
Well, in all this, in all this discussion that we've had tonight, Steve's name keeps coming up in a number of ways. You know, I, I've sat here for years and years and seen him through all the years of his DPW directorship. But just because it's come up again right now, and we're going out to bid again for the reasons that TAN has suggested, I would like to say to the rest of you, and anybody else who cares to listen, if you read this piece of which, to which I don't subscribe, I just want you to know I've never been Steve Matchdeck's shill, or anybody else's shill. And I know you look puzzled, but that's the accusation. So, of course, the former president denies any wrongdoing as well, so I understand.
What's the definition of shill?
Oh, that's a good question. You should look. Oh, I checked it because I was a shill.
Do you have the definition?
Oh, of course.
Somebody yourselves or somebody else?
Somebody who, somebody who sells for somebody else.
Well, sell is not exactly the way it's described, but promotes. And it uses the example, and I checked it, of the gambler, the, the card game that's going on inside the tavern, and somebody's outside saying, hey, this is a good game, you know, there's gambling going on in there. Because the guy outside knows that there's somebody inside.
So it's not really a positive.
Oh, no. Positive. Excuse me, absolutely not, which was exactly the intent of this so-called editorial. So I'm asking Lynn for the record, since we're going out to bid, for the reasons you indicated, TAN, and discussion. I just wanted to say, go out to bid, but just so you know, I'm nobody's shill.
Okay.
Yours too, Pat.
All in favor? Aye.
He's not your shill either.
Next up is Exeter Public Library awarding a bid carpet replacement. You wanna talk to that, Ken?
Yep. So the Champloo Foundation came through again, and one of the last pieces that do for renovation up there is the copper. And it was advertised, and the bids were received, and we had a committee that met last Friday. And we have all that. And TAN came up with a great method for sending the information. There were two bidders. One is the, one he recommended is Copper Clinic. And that one, Copper Clinic, is the primary carpet supplier of libraries. So that's what they focus on. And so you know, it may not have been in here. We did get quotes way back when we first engaged with Champloo about the carpet, and the price is the same. So they did not go up because they had to go up to bid. And then you'll see, there's just a huge discrepancy with the second.
More than double the price, huh?
Yeah, so.
Weird.
Yep. So they all, um, the committee recommended Copper Clinic, TAN. Hopefully, his last RFP for a while, and he's getting pretty good at it, he's learned a lot. So I will take that, he went through a couple procedures and then Copper Clinic.
I got a comment. TAN and I went, he asked me to come along and go look at another job that is done by that company. Several, like Ken's saying, several libraries are done by this company, and the work's flawless. We were looking for problems at North Kingstown. I didn't even think our library needed it until you go and see nice, fresh new copper in a building, especially the breezeway, and things like that. So he did that too. He went and looked, we went together.
Did their contractors bring up their mess?
Ah, and, and another thing, everybody, he did a lot of phone calls because there's a lot of reference. He says that people recommended them glowingly. That is TAN's words, not mine. So that's what he told me too, about this particular company. And the work looks great.
Sure.
I move that we accept the recommendation of TAN Tran Carpet Replacement. And.
And awarded to.
And, and awarded to, awarded to Carpet Clinic, not Carpet Clinic. Second.
Any discussion?
And the, the figure should be in there, fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. But also, there should be reference to the fact that this is not tax-based dollars. Cover by Champloo's, Champloo Clinic. And the library, just to your, your comment, Rob, I think the library is, what, sixteen, it was around seventeen, something like that. So it's, it's had its use, and it'll look even better in months. But I shouldn't say I'm promoting Carpet Clinic or New Carpet or anything.
You're like a shill, a shill.
I'm not being the shill for Carpet Clinic. I have no clue who these people are, but you can be sure that that'll probably appear.
Don't pretend you're not, yeah.
Well, I'm not. I don't know who these people are, but to be able to say thank you for the job that's being done.
You're trying to get people to re-carpet their houses all the time. Yeah, by Carpet Clinic.
Okay, was that your motion? Give everybody a second?
I think I said.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Exeter Public Library awarding a bid automatic door openers, no bids received.
No bids. Can I just bring something up there? When I was talking to Ken about, she said he was at a library meeting Thursday, it's Wednesday, Thursday, and I didn't hear anything about it, but they may have raised the state purchasing requirements from five thousand to ten thousand. I didn't know. And I told my bookkeeper. I haven't seen it yet, I got that information from. So this is definitely one of the ones that would never have to go out to bid because it's not that.
So when you say raising it, you're talking about a ceiling or?
A ceiling, yeah.
For which?
After five thousand, we go out to bid.
But now it could be ten.
It could be ten, it should be ten, because of the consolidation, so.
You can't say much.
Yeah, so I'll have that, I'll verify what TAN ordered. And when he gets back, I'll have discussion with him. If it does work, ten, even though the state law has changed, we still change our algorithms, but while it's happening.
I'm not gonna comment on, well, I guess, to the situation.
So as far as this goes, if the state law changes, then it will all buy.
Definitely, yeah, it's, it's well underneath that, but I'll wait till he gets back, and talk with him about it. And if not, we'll just put it back on the agenda and talk about it again.
We'll change the, change the chart first, right?
Um, I don't think, the person, I don't think the, I'll pay the work back soon. We might just start with state law. I'll pay the work. I know our ordinance starts, matches the state.
So we, yeah, should we have to wait for when this has changed, and if they're gonna be over?
Yeah, okay, we'll wait for children back. Whatever, it's all.
Simple and compact.
Okay, next, Exeter Public Library, sole source short form agreement for services provided, Gathers and Dancouts.
She received that final version today, with a few minor spelling errors that we, that we're super. Sole source provided by email. So Jim approved everything. TAN followed up with a few little spelling errors that may change this bill, and then it came back to race. Jim reviewed it.
That applies for the next one too. Exeter Public Library, sole source short form agreement for services provided, Fortico.
Yeah.
So those two are dead. Okay. So those two are dead. Okay.
Do they need to be approved by the council?
Yeah, Jim.
I beg your pardon?
Yes.
Jim wanted.
Well, I move that those sole source agreements as presented here tonight on both those issues of letters and the portico be approved. That's the second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Kind of shouldn't make that motion.
Okay.
Because it's.
Oh, you're shilling.
Shilling.
Okay. Town Council Assistant requests to go out to bid historic preservation of Woody Hill and Hall School and Old Town Hall.
Do you have the, do you have the, the RFPs for the Woody Hill and the Hall School? These were completed pre-COVID, when we were getting ready to, with the warless. The Old Town Hall, I, you know, I said clarify that I went through and that the town made the motion and put the Woody Hill and the Hall School RFPs on for this tiny shill for the Old Town Hall at the time. And I just said to get out the Old Town Hall and we'll just keep it there as a holdup. And it just came across that, that I was going to have that. But I don't believe it is appropriate to redo the Old Town Hall. Right now, not with, you know, doing the work for the Woody Hill and Hall School and not knowing exactly what the Old Town Hall means, we have to go through it again. So it's more interior, so.
Well, under discussion, is it secure? Is it secure at the Old Town Hall, Rob? Can you look? I mean?
We've been here recently, well.
I mean, something hasn't eaten through it. I mean, it's just.
The front door.
That, that front door is.
Okay, no, but then we have books stored in there and it's, you know, infested with mice now. The books, I don't know, the books still there?
Yeah.
We gotta get rid of the books. But something actually went in there and started killing the mice because there's a blood hole in the books. So.
I'm sorry.
Nature's way up there. So that's why we're going to get, we gotta get out there.
There's a blood hole in the books?
So.
Like old library books?
No, they don't, yeah, but they were donated. Wasn't, the books were donated by the?
Bookstore closed down and donated all their book collection. So three books, right? Big house mouse, wooden, bloody books.
I, you never ask the question unless you know the answer by the time. I should, sorry.
But there was one of the little boards on the front green door that was broken open or chewed open or something.
There's two sets of doors, right? Which is one after text.
Yeah, that's the inside door.
Well, you know, the history guy just says, can we at least secure the building just in case, you know?
It is, yeah, I go, but also, you can tell when nobody's been broken into.
Nobody.
People.
Just a lot, just a lot of blood everywhere.
Can you secure from the animals? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I guess so. I just wanted to be sure. That would be nice.
Okay, so we need a motion to go out to bid for these two items.
Just for Woody Hill and?
Hall School.
Hall School.
Okay, I'll make a motion. Just for Woody Hill and Hall.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next up, J. September Communication number eleven and twelve, cell tower proposal for Everest Infrastructure Partners and Munison Infrastructure. You're up, Maria.
Well, so over the years, we've always been getting these offers for, to basically buy out, accelerate the income stream that we get from the cell tower that we rent out space now. And we get about twenty-eight, twenty-eight hundred a month, depending on the month and the number of renters who kind of come in and, you know, jump in and jump out. And we've always gotten these offers to basically accelerate the income stream and get a lump sum. And they're getting pretty attractive, but they're in the four hundred, five hundred, six hundred thousand dollar range. And normally we just say no and we're not interested. But it was just maybe enough money and especially if we're going to do any sort of capital improvements or purchase or whatever it is, it's just to make you aware that this money can be available if we needed, you know, quite a bit of money for some big project that we're thinking. I think that I talked to Ken and we do have to review some of the language in the original agreement with SBA Communications. So it's by no means, you know, something that can be decided right away. But I just wanted to make council aware, there were a couple of offers and they're willing to entertain negotiation and.
I'll have to go back and look at who paid the building. I know he did.
SBA did, you know?
Those, the town?
To build it, SBA thing.
They did?
They did. They would give it to them.
Yeah, so they might have some kind of interest in it.
I think they have to be offered it first. So if there's something, I think we do have to go with them and say, we're considering selling this lease, you know? I think they do, I think I saw that in the contract that they do have to be approached first.
Actually, I think they need to be contacted to see what they think about it. The last time we discussed this and I looked into it, I looked into the other municipalities that dealt with the last company. And it was not so much that they're into it, the SBA's into it. They've been into it for a while. The newer companies buy and they sell and buy and sell and buy and sell. Some municipality reported some really bad outcomes at the end. So, you know, eventually a company will just go out of business and just walk away. You know, the cell tower's sitting there and then the demolition of it. I don't even know if we have a bond associated with it because we own it, we don't have a bond. There's a lot of factors to really look at. So it's not, it's easy money now, you know, all along. We'll pay for it maybe later.
So would we authorize or reintroduce it to Jim?
Sure.
Okay. I guess that's my motion. I've had discussions, you know what my feeling is? The way technology's changing. I bet you Ken agrees, it'll be obsolete.
Well, take the money and run.
That's my feeling.
Or what am I missing? I mean, Maria said maybe it's time to consider it, so.
That's an interesting point, huh?
So you, well, so you, you made the motion to someone say?
For Maria and Jim to reach out and.
Two discussions. Discussion, yeah.
The only thing about the ten-year deal is that now the company realizing that it owns it now or whatever, it's going to walk away if our bankruptcy or whatever. And then we have a cell tower that's sitting there that we're responsible for now.
Make a post-up bond.
We don't have a bond here.
Make them post a bond.
They won't. I'll write that down. Will they post a bond? How much is the cost?
We might have a bond. I'd have to look.
On that?
That one is easy, definitely. There's no good answer.
It just doesn't make, it doesn't make any sense for them to invest that much money that quickly. Something that brings in not that much money in comparison to a cost. So there's going to be more to it.
Well, that's why Maria and Jim will figure it out.
And I think that's why over the past years, we've always said.
We've always said no.
Let it go.
We like the income stream. We like the yearly income stream. It's part of our budget. But, you know, we're trying to gather.
Yeah, I.
It could be true.
Some of the money. But, but, but the point here is that there's a sum of money being offered now. I mean, as Ken said, they might do co-bankrupt or something, but we've got the money. We got their money, right?
Yeah, but then we're left with the ugly cell phone tower that falls on somebody's head. That's a different problem.
We can embellish it and.
Make it a flagpole.
One of those little slide things.
Burning man thing.
That's right.
Look like a tree, like a plane tree.
Yeah, right.
They do that. So one of them was out, this bar was out.
Well, we'll leave that on for the next one. Item K, resident complaints, five oh one Vicry Highway. I'm sure everybody has received a letter from Ron, the building inspector, probably three weeks ago. That's the same one that Jesse said we fit to a five oh one Vicry, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. I, we, we, we discussed, it was going to be on, if you, Mike said he wanted, he wanted to put it on. And he said, oh, no. But then I came and said, no, no, put, leave it on. And the reason I thought it should be on is that Ron has, has addressed this. But I think that, I'd like the record of tonight's meeting to show that we as a council did address it and that we have, we have sent the building inspector off on a mission, which he's already, he's already doing. And they've already been notified as well. And if the record indicates that for tonight's meeting, then at least if someone's asking, did you people like even talk about it? We, we have a record, so that's why I wanted it left. And I can say to you that I did drive in that facility. There are a couple of, at least a couple of abandoned trailers, but Ron and I happened to talk about that last week. I saw them there. And it's, it's not, it's not a good situation. But I, I think the council perhaps are right to Mr. Colset indicating that we know, you know, that it's been addressed, but please, from the council, not please, from the council, we ask that he, that he address the abandoned trailers.
He remedy the situation.
The building official has to wait that one.
The Department of Business Regulation is involved. He's so, he scored on here too. That's a shame, right?
Right. But, but, but I, I still think that local council should let Jim know that we've addressed this. Jim Colset, well, I didn't know him years ago.
Did Ron?
I think, I think Ron, Ron did.
Yep, he didn't. Yeah.
All right. And so he, he copied us and Chief Public Protection Inspector from GBR. Right. But, but I just think the record for this meeting should indicate that we were aware of these complaints and we hope they should be mitigated, corrected, addressed, something.
He sent around something tonight from the state, no, state laws, that the new property needs to be recorded and where it happens. So he has that now. He might have news in these situations.
Well, my motion would be that we already took it on the facility.
Right, Colset.
Yes, please.
Aye. Okay. Do we go on to the next one?
I don't think, I, until we hear. Who would be wrong there?
Unfinished business, use of American Rescue Plan act funds, possible build, build, build a retail mall for a possible purchase of Seven Forty-two Camera Club. Okay, we're still working on that.
Well, excuse me, are you moving on?
Well, definitely, definitely.
Over here again?
PowerPoint in here somewhere? Was that that one? No. American Rescue Plan.
Oh, we got to discuss the purchase of Seven Forty-two, so I need to accuse myself and go, go sit over there, I guess. After I go to the bathroom.
Okay.
Oh, well, yeah, I, I think, I think we need to discuss what we're headed with that money that needs to be expended. Spend it or lose it. I notice here that it says use of, of ARCA funds to build a new town hall for the purchase. For the discussion here, and I don't mean for the rest of the night, I feel bad, but maybe, but for discussion, I, I'm going to move that we do need that and commit the funds to renovating this building and making it, addressing the issues that we know exist here right now. And if there's a second, we'll discuss, if there's no second, we, we won't discuss it.
If there's a second, we'll probably back to the original plan that was like.
Well, there's no point. I mean, if, if you don't want to consider what I just said.
We need such a good point.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that there apparently isn't a second, so we won't do that. So, well, I hate to make any motions here because of the discussion that surfaced earlier this evening. I have to bid.
Yeah.
That I'm involved in any spending of money of any kind given to anybody. So why don't one of you make a motion? I beg your pardon? The motion failed because it had no second. So I would strongly urge one of you to make a motion that we proceed with the purchase of the facility, what's the number of, yeah?
Well, that I was going to wait until Jim was back and do this in executive session because there was some back and forth.
I was going to ask.
All right, so, so we'll wait. All right, so another month.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
You can set that down.
Yes, we, that's over.
So executive session, make me go.
Yeah, okay. July two thousand twenty-two Communication under sixteen. Governor McHeever Island Capital Projects for multi-purpose community facilities matching grant. That's the one I was thinking of the other.
Okay, sorry.
That's the one with the big PowerPoint that was in the package.
Yes. So you saw the, the figures that were sent to you. The work, the bid was awarded. Lynn and I had a couple of discussions with the people at the state office of pandemic recovery. The, the grant is, well, there's a lot of specifications to it. It has to incorporate work, education, and health. There's a looking, so we have about two years to either acquire or build a space where can be used as community center activities. And there's a lot of reporting, there's a lot of monitoring for five years beyond twenty twenty. It has to be built by October twenty twenty-six. Programs have to be running by December twenty twenty-six. And then there's like some timelines that they would like to see met because they don't want people to fall behind. Especially if you're constructing anything, there's, there's been a lot of delays apparently other cities and towns. We need materials, we need labor, kind of find labor, et cetera, et cetera. So it, it would not be easy. The other alternative is to forfeit the money and not go forward. It would not be easy. It would not be pleasant. It would not be.
It looked like a lot of paperwork.
So it's a lot of everything, a lot of monitoring, a lot of paperwork, a lot of follow-up. And, you know, we're all stretched.
And that would fall on you unless we hired somebody to administer this grant.
I'm going to take it off the top of the question.
Yeah.
Well, you, so for the programs, you can't take, you can hire somebody to run the programs. This is a capital grant, a project manager, but for the construction, it can't be taken off if you're constructing, if you're building.
What you're saying is that that can be taken out of the grant, but you're going to hire somebody for the five years?
Yeah.
No. It can't. So it's got to come in turn.
That's fair enough. Are you thinking of something like for seniors or?
Well, so, I mean, in like your world, EMA would be involved, social services would get involved. The school should be involved, but I see.
You suggested URI, getting people from the.
URI. Right. I mean, there's, the resources. Right, I mean, there's, the resources are there, it's just having the internal staffing to be able to reach out to these people, connect, a lot of community involvement, so, uh, like Facebook pages and social media meetings, perhaps with a community invitation for ideas and what they would like to see in that space, broadband being available to anybody who would need broadband if they don't have it at home, or available, um, places where somebody could come and do like a doctor's visit that they may not have that privacy or, or the space or the computer at home, this is what they're thinking. Or a job interview, or you know, some sort of, you know, so they, there is some element of privacy that needs to be established, um, you know, maybe a couple of rooms. I mean, there's, there's a lot of ideas, there's a lot of stuff, it's a lot of money, but it's also a lot of work.
I was here, and I, just let me say that I was here last week, and the two ladies and I were talking about this, and, and first of all, I'd say that we still hold on it till we decide what exactly we're doing, that we know what this grant will be applied, and I think it's pretty obvious that what we're gonna be doing is a purchase. But my point is this, I said, well, it probably would need a, or could use a facilitator to call people together and, and announce meetings of lots of people, and I said, oh, you know, I could, I'll volunteer to be a, represent the council as a facilitator to plan. Now, they both looked at me and said, no, you're not serious. So, I just offered, they didn't really say that, but there's a lot of stuff, but here's my, here's my other thought, if you say we're gonna have a program for, I don't know, seniors, some program, and three people show up, at least you have to document that you put it out on the website, and there's a such and such at the facility on such and such a day, and if five people attend, well, at least you've, you've tried, you, you know what I mean, so if you try, and you just think it could be done.
That's what I, I hear, or I don't wanna dunk this all on Jessica, but I see her being a big part of it, if we do go forward with this, because she does have a lot of programs already in place that she could tweak or make work for this.
But, but, and you're right, and, and what if?
Like, I wouldn't wanna throw you guys under that bus and just, here you go.
Well, we have thought of that, that she can move her programs from the library.
Yeah.
This chapel to this space, very, pretty easily, we can get that.
Endor.
We have to see how they incorporate into work, health, and education. Endor, yes, we go to that too.
Gotta be careful, you don't wanna have competition now between the library and this new program.
No, well, that's true, because they're doing so many.
Who has ownership of what is questionable sometimes on who's coordinated the program, who's jumped on board program.
Can it be part of, can this be part of the library or extension of the library?
The only way we were thinking at the very beginning of the discussion was to move the old town hall, was a way to pay for that and put it there. I mean, they have, that's what they do, they plan these community events.
Well, yes.
Well, it's a matching grant, so if they give us four hundred thousand, you have to put in four hundred thousand, so don't forget that component, it's a matching grant, so if we were already building onto whatever, building, buying, if we're already expending that money, then half of it would come from the grant, half of it, but, um...
Sort of American Rescue recovery money would be used as a match?
As a match, yes.
So, they're matching their own money with their money?
Oh, I understand.
At the end of the day, it's a.
One thing they could say is, you know, we have to meet all these criteria and at certain dates and certain times, and, um, if we miss any, they're supposedly, they're gonna do spot checks, supposedly, and if we miss that, if we miss it, mhm. So, you know, you got seven years, and if you've got somebody doing it, they arrange for three years, they leave, the other person picks up and misses something.
Right, it could be the last year and you miss a mark, you know, this is what they're saying.
That's what I said, and people, and people say, you know, they're not gonna spot check this estate, they're not gonna do that, but we don't know, we have to.
This is a lot of talking about here.
Write that with them.
And, and you can see the, um, I think they have the schedule ready of what, or who was awarded.
No, that's not.
That's not, okay.
I think I saw that somewhere.
Yeah, we provided it, yes.
Okay, so we'll leave it on here for next one.
So, I think there's a deadline for this, like, it, it stages for October ten, we have to have stage two in with them, and then that's like budgets and.
Yeah, we've already done stage one, but now stage two is more reports and budgets and, uh, plan, like a real plan.
Okay.
So, which, we need to decide which direction we're going in, and then decide.
Do we do stage two, or, when we're, we weren't gonna put it all into, go all in?
Then you have to, no, but you have to test.
And stage two needs to be completed, all, that whole plan needs to be completed and submitted by October ten.
And do you, do you remember that one, three sixty five, all those resolutions we got from the other towns?
Yes.
Somehow this is part of that, and there has to be something.
So, that, the next meeting is on October second, that just gives one week after that meeting.
Um, we have, we have to do something by the end of this week.
Yeah, there's, there's some meetings, there's some tutorials.
Another meeting, another meeting coming up, we have to do something, or schedule something by the end of the week.
Like, even though this is a lot of work, do you feel like if we have people that do it and I'm not wanting to put it all on you, but you've been riding this boat so far, do you think we could do it?
I'm, I mean, I, I'm not one to throw away four hundred thousand.
So, yes, you think it might be a pain in the neck, and it will, it will definitely take a lot of work, but we can do it.
Ken, why don't you start?
Go for it.
The council has to test by November, that, you have a project.
And we have a project?
November of this time.
This year.
Yeah. So, we had, we put together preliminary project when we thought that we were, you know, going to do the addition.
Yes.
So, as long, as soon as we know what direction we're going in, we can, you know, start with that, and budgets, and, and we need a budget, you know?
It doesn't look like we're gonna do that, see, that's what I thought in the discussion, if there had been a second in my motion, we could have discussed options for adding on, but there was no second, so we couldn't discuss it.
And, um, and it's also like if, if, for example, the project costs eight hundred thousand and four hundreds through this grant, then fifty percent or so of that facility, whatever it is, should be used as a community center, which is something to keep in mind, and it, but it's five years, after the five years, nobody's, you know, things that stick, they continue, things that don't, um, can be stopped, I guess.
Not that much money if you're paying for five years, or fifty percent of the money for seven years, starting with the first one. But considering, considering, um, the activities that has to be done, is that really, like, I know we do it in a way that other these towns don't, they're nonprofits and all that do it, but is that something that this town supports and thinks it should happen because we can get four hundred and forty thousand dollars to do it? So, I, I just, I just see this.
Then the money will get redistributed by the remaining ones, and that keeps going, so it's like survival, we're the last ones.
I say this with the federal grants a lot, that the federal grants dictate what the federal policy is and what, where they're going with it, and this is the same thing that the federal government came up with this, our money to give to the states to open up these community centers to serve more people in the community, and so it's their philosophy, I guess, that's to come down, and it's coming with money, so we have to do what they say, and they're just gonna give us the money, that's the way it works. So, you get federal policy at your local level. So, I don't know how far the town wants to go, you know, we've got discussions all over here about students, the YMCA came in, they're gonna build a YMCA here, you know, certain things like that, community center events, and, um, structures, and, you know, like, to the point of building, but we have programs and services going on, and it really increased, um, but to a point of not really investing half a million dollars, there's that really, like, good to match.
Get up, education, and that's, or?
Well, that's just four hundred, four hundred and forty, what was it?
Four hundred and seventy, four hundred and forty nine, was the latest figure that we got, but that could change.
So, that's really eight hundred, because that's, you know, double that, we have to match, nine hundred, nine hundred thousand. But, remember, you're building something, is that part of the mission and the philosophy of the town, or is we just doing it?
Yes.
For the money, and just thinking it's gonna be a great deal.
I think we need some more, you know, infrastructure.
It's a public hearing, so.
No, we're not having a public hearing right now, so, okay, now, alright, so what are we doing, what are we gonna do?
And are you taking any input, is anyone around to speak, or no?
No. Okay, she's asking, she goes, you know.
No, I said, no, it's not a public hearing right now, so.
I, I think, um, as far as I'm concerned, a public hearing will start to begin with stage three as we can, until council chooses a path and chooses if they want to continue looking back with.
Alright, how many hours does that involve for you to do that?
Oh, I mean, a lot, I mean, we're already, we're already putting a lot into it. We've been doing this for a year, six hours of meetings and.
So, maybe we, if we don't wanna do this, we'll stop, just keep kicking Ken on the road, Ken, you said, oh, this might not be something that we want, or we're gonna embrace in this community, I don't understand what you mean by that, I want to, what, what kind of parameters are they putting on it, on us that we might not wanna go along with?
We're doing it in a different way, we, we have a social services director, probably the only one in the state, um, quote, you know, elected, um, but we have a lot of nonprofits that support and do a lot of work in the town, but the, um, you know, the, the history of it is, we go back to public welfare director, was an elected position going way back, I mean, we maintained it, and, um, while other communities did other things and approached it in different ways, and, you know, supported nonprofits, to support nonprofits a lot more, they used to get forty five hundred dollars, five thousand dollars apiece every year in our budget, and now we cut that back to zero, just about, right? So, um, we kinda left it up to professionals, but also had public welfare director, still as elected officials to kind of represent the town, so it's just like, you know, what, what is the, you know, what are the parameters, where's the, where's the town, where's the strategic plan on public community welfare, but, you know, they're really, they're really talking about that, it's kinda just evolving, and it's based on whoever's in charge right now, and how the community feels, how the public feels, how this town would be, there's a lot of factors, but I don't think there's anything really, you know, plan, uh, where we're going with this sort of tool, do a eight hundred thousand dollar facility, it's gonna, I think it's gonna be, look that one closely, is that really what we wanna do?
Well, this is not just a facility for that. It's.
It is for five years.
Well, just how, how many programs, like, how, how intensive, do they have to be once a week, once a month, once every other month?
We did ask that, and I think that they're looking for a good faith effort and, um, a lot of community involvement, so to us.
For us, that might be once a month.
Well, we did explain that Exeter sometimes, you know, you could.
Cause we are stretched thin.
Who can't get people to have, be on our committees?
And that's, and that's not, that wouldn't be our fault, they would not penalize us if programs had to be started and then stopped or altered or gone another direction, that is just something that, I think, what they're doing is they're looking at the things that they've seen nationwide that happened through COVID, like the family of five, each trying to work from home to a school from home, and they're gathered around one room, two computers, and it, and you know, it, it, you know, didn't work out very well, so what they're trying to do is help alleviate that if it were to happen again, and so now you build a space for them to come if somebody needs some privacy, if somebody needs broadband, I mean, that may not be Exeter's problem, I, you don't know.
Exeter's problem is like Jessica doesn't have a place, like, um, one of the things was nutrition or food outreach, she does the food bank, she can run a program about nutrition, like, it's a no-brainer, easy thing that's there in place already.
Unless she gets a speaker, right, she, she sets it up.
So, they have no problem with it being used as a council chamber once in a while, once a month, or even elections, place?
But it doesn't need to be available, um, daily, like, if you purchase a computer and for people to come and fill out job applications, or use the broadband, um, for, hopefully for education, for job searching, that sort of thing.
I'm gonna ask, I apologize if it's a stupid question, but, uh, can we use that as an addition, I know I didn't get a second, but is that what you're referring to, cause we use that here for thousand as an addition to this?
Yes.
So, it can be used if we had put addition, originally, the application was because we were gonna put an addition on, and we were gonna make that room the community room as well as a council chamber, and they, they accepted that, and then when we started talking about purchasing the other building, we asked, can we use it towards, and we asked on the call calls, we can use it as an acquisition, if you make a space in there that is a community space, so we can use it, we can have this space up there.
And this one?
Yeah, which I think is a no-brainer with all the work, you know, aside, but.
Can we, uh, uh, award a percentage for the administrative, administrators, like we've done in other things?
Not with this particular grant, this is completely a capital grant, has to be used for a capital purchase.
First two years can be administration fees just for building the space.
Right, so if you hired a class manager.
We won't be turning to it.
Yeah, the first two years of construction.
Construction. You can use administration fees from the grant for construction, the first two years of construction, um, but the five years, you can't use administration fees, you have to, if you are gonna pay somebody, or the speakers require a fee, it's gonna have to come out of the town budget.
And we had a discussion about how to manage it, cause the library does it, so hire another part-time person at the library, it's five years of doing it.
One step to this, right?
Well, we're not having a public hearing right now, this council, this is a discussion between the members of the council. Okay, so, we're gonna just keep moving on there, that's, okay, alright, we're gonna go to the next item, which is, uh, Split Rock Mobile Park C.
What did you decide?
She's gonna continue to keep working on it. That's, Split Rock Mobile Park C, one and two, we're gonna continue this until next month, the attorney is supposed to be here, they're probably going to be going back and forth.
The emails? Oh, impact fees?
No, we're right above it, we're gonna go to impact fees next, so, right here, C, one, two.
Does anyone know if those polls matter?
Okay, you wanna speak?
I don't wanna make a suggestion about ten C, well, is it really ten C?
Yeah, cause they're gonna be.
Might not be ten C, it might actually be under.
Well, they're gonna be in next week with, uh, next, council meeting, their lawyers will be looking at all their updates, that was what was going back and forth with Jessica, what's that lawyer's name?
What's that lawyer's name? Bogayz, Bogayz. Okay. So that will be continued to next month. Uh, D, Town of Exeter, the co-ordinates, chapter fourteen, buildings of the building regulation, article that impact fees. We're still. That's what Jim, Jim has a recommendation from, I worked on it, an consultant, and, Jim's gonna, he said. Ben Alawaya. Okay. Item E, town emails and records, official staff, boards and commissions. We're down to four.
And just, uh, when I was at the planning board meeting, just in discussion with some members, they're like, we don't even use email. Like, they're not, so do we penalize them or, like, if they're not using email?
Can they set it up? In case they need?
If they're not using email, like, that wasn't a part of the job requirement when they volunteered for the board. Like, can we force them to use email when they don't email?
I don't think we wanna, we wanna, uh, start a.
No.
Talk a war with other people who are wild and tame, like we are, right?
That's exactly my point.
But can we ask them just to set it up with Jim? If they don't wanna use it, they don't have?
Well, if they don't use a computer or don't.
Have access.
Yeah. You know, you might not be able to imagine that, but some, some people.
So these four people don't use email? They don't even use email?
I'm not saying all of them don't. I'm just saying that was, it had nothing to do with this. It would just came out, and I'm like, huh, that's an interesting result to this.
Yeah. I mean, that's certainly good, uh, that's fine with me. If it's, but is it all four of them?
I don't know if all four of them, but Tim said, uh, Ja-, uh, James said, Tim wanted to set it up. He's the one that we reappointed the zoning board.
Tim Robinson?
Yes. But the other ones? You know, I would say at this point, move on.
So you reached out to, to, um, Tim reached out to Jim a month ago, but then it didn't do anything beyond that, to set it up? Probably wait and see if we got a reappointment.
You know, if, if we, if we could instruct the, the clerk to the boards, whoever does not email, just, that's not a way they communicate with those people. I don't know. But if there's somebody does not.
Chairman of the board doesn't send emails now? They don't, nobody sends emails to the, to those boards? They don't, they don't, they don't get emails and, and read them? How do they know? We get emails all the time. How does that?
But we also get hard copies of stuff.
Okay.
Hard copies, so.
Okay. So their emails, they don't get sent? They have to come in and get it only?
Mm-hmm.
Like, it is hard to.
Yeah. In, in twenty twenty-three, that's kind of unimaginable, but it's reality. The same reason we talk about this community grant or community access to broadband in a computer, like, it's important. Some people don't.
Have I?
Yeah.
So maybe we can talk to each of these individuals and confirm that. And if so, we can just stop talking about it.
I think we should just stop talking about it because this is eating, like, what are these three or four, whatever it is, if we don't commute, if they're not on the email or whatever?
What, so we passed the, the, whatever.
If you're using email, it's, if you're, the, the email policy.
Policy? Policy? And, and so if, if, we have to, don't we have to confirm that they're not using email? We can't just, we have to do our job.
Well, if there's no email address for them, there's no email address for them.
Let's confirm that.
It is confirmed because they do not have a town email address.
Are they using their personal, that's how it all started, are they using their personal email addresses for town business?
The town will not email them at a personal address.
Does Dixie contact them by email?
Yes.
She might email them.
Dixie does?
She might email them, but if people are not.
But they shouldn't be responding.
Yes.
She just, if she's just informing them of the next meeting or something, if they're not discussing town business. But otherwise, cause then it's not really a record.
If they're all.
Unless it's, um.
Should we send, um, a letter to Dixie saying, don't use their personal emails if they have not set up?
Then she'll have to call them.
Yeah.
I have a question. When a zoning board meets, I'll use the zoning board, isn't there a packet of information that's provided for that, the applications that are in front of them with an agenda? And doesn't she prepare packets for each member of the zoning board? I mean, I'm just thinking that's, I think that's the way it works.
Yes.
So that they're either mailed to those people or those people pick them up. I'm not sure which, but I think that negates the issue of why they need or don't need an email because they get their packet of information with their agenda and their applications, and that's what they're needing about. And they're not really discussing policy. Like, we keep having these issues that we, and we don't discuss it amongst ourselves, but Lynn keeps giving us information that she gets and always says, we'll have a hard copy. But I don't think that probably happens because it's a different, they're only addressing applications. Like, if we only have this public hearing application, but we have all this other stuff that's going on in front of us. So I think that's an issue. I think that's why, maybe I'm wrong, why some members of the planning board say, I just don't use emails, I just get my packet for a meeting. Doesn't she prepare packets like that? So that's my thought.
She gives me a packet.
So if somebody says, I don't use it, they probably don't, I could just come up here once a week and pick up the reams of paper that we have, and I wouldn't have to look at it.
Yeah.
Don't use their personal email address. They're gonna call, so.
Well, I, yeah, you have a question, get off the phone.
Let him to them, and Dixie, you don't use their personal emails?
Well, if they're not using email, they're not gonna get the email.
No, don't use personal emails.
Yes.
You're not gonna sign up for town.
Yep.
But don't use your personal.
For town business. Exactly.
It could be a business item, I mean.
And then we just stop talking about it?
Yes.
Great.
I'm doing that letter.
Thank you.
Am I? Yes.
Okay. And take it off when you're done, Joe, so. Okay. Item F, Director of Public Works, request for guidance, incident five, West Shore Road. Rob and Jim have been going back and forth, and the one owner at the end of that road brought us a survey of his lot. And Jim suggested that we reach out to the survey company that did that, and this is dated today. You gonna give copies of the rest of the council tomorrow or not?
I can't, yeah.
Yeah, I don't.
I didn't make anybody.
When I, we came in late today, it's for a class one survey because we can't sit there and start, if the individual's stone wall is on the town road, we don't know without a survey. So they've come in, they're at the five thousand dollar threshold. So I told Rob to get two more written quotes from some.
What about the survey we got last month at the last month meeting?
That was a copy of the survey of their lot to people across the street. We're not surveying, so we can't make a decision that way. This is actually a quote for a class one survey.
So we have to spend that money?
We can't, we can't.
I have somebody to interpret what we have.
We're still gathering information. We're gonna get two more quotes and give it to Jim. We can give him this one to start.
The survey, Mike, that somebody gave us was for, like, the lot next door.
The people right across the street.
Across the street, so that doesn't, that gives you a starting off point, but it doesn't.
One line.
Yeah.
This is the company that did that survey, so.
So they can build on that. Can I just ask, I mean, Rob, did Rob, I asked Rob about issues, and he, you said you were going up there, but we suppose.
Yeah. I met with the gentleman this morning, and I actually have more questions than answers at this point, but like Dan said, it's, it's ongoing. We're trying to pick our solution.
Which gentleman? Surveyor or the owner of the property?
No, the surveyor. I met the surveyor that Dan has at the quote in his hands.
In his hand.
And we got that name off the document that the gentleman gave us.
That other gentleman. Exactly. Got it. You're building the information piece here.
Good. You have any help?
Meanwhile, rescues and fire departments cannot turn around.
Excuse me?
It's a safety concern. Rescues and fire trucks cannot turn around at that turnaround.
Could they turn around without the motion?
Could they turn? Not really. But they could make it to the end, and every house is there. We're trying to get to a resolution, so.
What is your name, please?
Wendy Fenner Aubin. F E N N E R A U B I N.
They could've turned it on before, they can't turn it on now.
It's worse.
It was, but they can't turn it on either way.
But using a rescue, it could make it to the end.
I bet on the road to look at it. I don't think you can turn it on with a fire truck there.
It's very tough, spot without fire trucks. It's impossible right now, the way it is.
Yep.
It will up there, though, it's a moot point, cause we. Yeah. Okay. So that's gonna stay on for next month. We're still giving information. Next up is item G, awarding bid town hall architectural services.
Move, yeah, move it, we can move it.
Okay.
Second.
All favor.
All right.
Uh, item H, new legislation, changes to law mod act, comprehensive planning act, zoning enabling act, and land development and subdivision act. This is gonna be moved to new business for next month so we can set a public hearing. So I'll give last name, please. So motion to, do I need a motion to move that to new business? No, okay. So that's where it'll go to next month so we can set a public hearing. Okay. I, public access and zoning certificates, letters?
In that, I have had contact with James and I talked to Dixie, and, um, we're probably going to be heading in the direction of moving the zoning certificates to the E permitting, like the building and the electrical ones. And then they'll all be stored in the E permitting system, and it will make it easier and more streamlined for everybody.
And Jim is gonna do this?
Yes. It should be, he said, very easy. So.
Should I let him know to do that?
Yes. And this then can go away.
Should I let him know anyway or keep it?
No, let him know hand removed.
Yeah.
Right? Cause we don't need to talk about that anymore.
The next one, item J, Town of Exeter and Town of West Greenwich, and Exeter-West Greenwich Regional School District, joint resolution in support of clarifying section five D of public law nineteen sixty-five, chapter eighty, approving and ratifying the agreement between the towns of Exeter and West Greenwich, Rhode Island, with respect to the formation of a regional school district with amendments incorporated there. Okay. What this goes back to is, what was that, two or three years ago, Diane? When, two, two, I think?
No.
When they gave us a bill for thirty-five grand saying we owe them new money when we didn't owe them any money, so they sued us, and then they dropped the suit. Well, this language is, they're gonna make it to where if it happens again, they get, they get, we have to give them the money. So I'm gonna make a motion to deny the resolution.
Like a formal denial?
Uh, well, wait a minute, we'll just vote again. Just all in favor?
Whoa.
Into a second.
Make your motion. I think.
Into a second? Second. Deny the resolution?
You want me to change it from denial, or just do a vote to see?
Discussion.
Well, let's add this section. And then you can decide which one is it.
Remember, remember when the budget failed?
I absolutely remember, but Dan, uh, Dan, Jim's recommendation is that it should be a charter change. He doesn't say, he doesn't say, if we're gonna do it. And to me, the charter change would be to incorporate the, um, that, uh, what is it? Five-year average thing. And, and, and as a question of equity and fairness, if numbers shift and nothing else changes, maybe that should, I mean, at least we ought to consider a charter amendment. But the way it's been presented to us, I agree that we should not sign the resolution because Jim recommends otherwise.
Basically come back, cause when they sent us the supplemental bill.
No, no, I remember.
We didn't pay it, West Greenwich just paid it.
Yeah, no, I, I remember that.
West Greenwich paid it, and they wanted it from us as well. Yeah.
But they snuck it in, didn't they, Marie? They put it, they snuck it in, thirty-four.
In the budget, they put it in the budget.
So they got it twice.
Yeah, they did after getting the money from us the following year. So why is West Greenwich for this? I mean, we rushed the judgment. Why is West Greenwich for this? It, it works both ways.
It could've worked both ways.
It could work both ways. Why are they for it?
Because of what you just said, it's an equity issue, I think. I mean, they might benefit from it or they might lose.
For a period of time.
I think they see the shift coming.
At the end.
And so that, the shift doesn't benefit us. And they, they can see it, that more kids are going to enroll on their side and all the other things that go into it.
They've tried this for numerous years, you know, cause one time I went out there and we killed it, and they weren't happy with me because, I'm trying, they give a home stay exemption on taxes. There was like two or three things. Then I went to all their planning board meetings where they had approved, like, thirty-four houses in a twelve-month period, and one guy's giving me the finger, telling me I'm wrong. And here you go. So it died. And it was weak hisenger that was pushing it, so. So when we withdraw that motion, and I'll reword it a little bit better, we can.
Well, no.
So then it's withdrawn?
No.
Yeah, I'll withdraw my motion. Okay.
Can we just not do anything? Like, no motions, no nothing?
You wanna leave it limbo for another month?
Well, not even limbo. Just, we can remove it off the, like, here, we saw it, we're.
But, but here's my question. We wouldn't even discuss a charter change to allow for that in the event that the budget is not approved, new figures are approved, then we go back and see what happens to the, to the pupil count? I mean, that seems fair.
Actually, that was like.
It's what's fair in that.
A bunch of stuff that happened that'll probably never happen again. Cause they never, the school committee never put in, and it's right in the charter, they have plenty of months to put in another budget, and they never did.
And they, well.
And there were reasons for that.
So. Well.
That could happen again, though. It's, could happen.
It could.
If a budget, then, all right.
But we're protected because, or not protected, but we're locked into the last year's previous number. And this is telling us that we're not. That we'll renegotiate that.
Overwrite the charter.
So we just wanna get, we just wanna take this off the, uh. Yeah, also override state.
Yeah.
So we don't wanna move this from the agenda, is that what you wanna do?
That's what I would do, but if we need to officially deny it or.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
What?
Second failed. Second failed. We gotta let that happen.
What did you say?
We need to move to approve the resolution, but there was no second.
Was there a second?
No.
I got it, I got it.
Let's wait and see if there's a second. I don't have a second. No seconds?
No, I, no. I just didn't know what that game plan was all of a sudden.
Well, I better not. They could deny or do it officially, so.
It's fine.
To approve the resolution.
It was second and it failed and I should, yep, gotta let them know.
Well, I was just gonna say, could we, may I direct the clerk to inform them that we have addressed this issue? At our council meeting of tonight and a motion was made to, uh, what do you say? Was to adopt or approve. There was no second, therefore. It's not.
And remove this, remove this from the agenda.
Sure, and if it comes back again somehow, then.
Because this is the one I get in this email chain with this, they've got a new solicitor out there. When I first read it, it just looked to me like he was trying to get Bill Blowers.
He's the old solicitor.
And they're going up and down with these email chains. I gave up. And then a month later, they start again. And when they finally settled on a date, I couldn't make it. She went, replaced.
What email chain for what?
There's like, who was it? Like half a dozen lawyers in this email?
Andrew, goodness.
Not for this issue right here? I see. I didn't see it.
Yeah, we got rid of him and then he's back again.
Okay.
Yeah.
Next up is reports of officers, boards, and committees. Ken, did he add or?
Well, Woody Hill in the whole school, RFPs have approved. I'll work with Robin again into the old town hall and see what looks like. Right now, it's probably bee-infested.
Yeah, well, we don't need to.
We don't want to disturb that. If you wanna go to the signage on the major routes in town hall, so I did finish the application, signed it, and then sent it in the system. It just pops right back with all of a sudden a part two, which is very.
This is after where? The scenic highway?
The scenic highway, yeah. And so, um, I'll do the best I can because it's, it comes from a bridge in roadway's maintenance manual, which is probably like a thousand-page document. And I gotta find the areas of the signs that's probably, it's all split up, you know. And then get the, um, the information right from whoever went by the sign from. Put up the sign. We can be authorities. It's just the scenic roadway's issue that's the problem. So I think we'll just stop at that one sign because the application is gonna be the same exact thing for the rest of them to get approval, but it won't have to go through scenic roadway's.
What, I was just gonna say, what if it just goes to DOT and scenic one oh two and?
It's a, it's a simpler process because DOT does that. Same application process. They have an online system. So if you're building a bridge, putting a road in, or just putting a little stop sign up or whatever, it's all the same application process. Different information is needed based on the manual. But, um, we'll start with that one. Because the scenic roadway's could also be able to see the price of the signs. Is that where we really like it? And it seemed to be safer. And Rob kind of said something about the sign that we picked out, Volentown, it got damaged.
Met stolen.
Stolen.
Wait, excuse, what? The Volentown sign?
They got stolen. They replaced it and it got stolen again.
Well, that's a concern. I mean, I had that concern for the, I'm sad.
Yeah, so we should be safe down there.
Somebody comes along with a chain, so I just.
Probably stole that one. We had a little, we had a little one. Anything bigger than that in store?
What, the one up here?
Yeah, we entered from North Kings.
One oh two, it's a little thing.
Is there anything in stock that's a little bigger?
You can put a little camera on it.
I mean.
You can put a little camera on it.
That's actually pretty big. That's bigger than what was there before.
No, it was, it was bigger and it was taken just when they started that project.
Okay.
Because that's where I figured they didn't know where the town line was and that's why they weren't calling.
I'll check, Mike. I think I put the biggest I had up.
You have smaller ones?
Why, so they don't see it, Mike?
Believe it or not, on these country roads, you don't want a big, old, ugly sign, honestly.
And I figured out how to get GPS where you're at, so I guessed where the town line was from the bus turning around.
All right, you're good. Uh, most solicitors report, Mike, you had reports.
Yeah, I just wanna, uh, from the tax assessor.
Tax collector.
The tax assessor's office. All residential, commercial, and business personal property appeal applications must be submitted to the tax assessor's office by the deadline of Friday, December fifteenth of this year. And then from the, uh, tax collector's office, first quarter payments for twenty twenty-three tax bills are now due. Please inform taxpayers they have until September fifteenth to make their payment to avoid penalties. If first quarter becomes delinquent, the entire bill plus penalties is due.
Okay, Cal.
Twenty and twenty-three. And number twenty, communication, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you're number seventeen.
No, you.
Oh.
No other history issues, right?
Seventeen. I do. Seventeen is, was the announcement I made, William Pennler, nine eleven, the government ceremony, the health act of Walmart of the Rhode Island Veteran Memorial Cemetery, nine AM, Monday, September eleventh.
He's looking for a counsel.
He's looking for a counsel person. I will be out of town.
I did a couple of years ago. I'd love to do it, but I'm gonna be leaving the next morning. I'm very busy at work on that Monday.
Monday, right?
I, I've done it before.
Would you be willing to do it again?
No. What time is it?
By noon.
On Monday.
Bring that.
He doesn't want to. I can try and nail it, but cameras are a bit small.
Yeah. Wipe out the door.
Actually, I can go. I'll do it.
All right, thank you.
Because I figure, I'm away from school.
I'll give them your contact information so we can fill you in. It's a quick zone, half an hour.
And you don't have to speak on the.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you. Cal, can you add number twenty?
Twenty. Uh, you know, they, gee, dare I, dare I raise the issue of ethics, but there are other people that might benefit from a session. And if you notice on this Ethics Commission communication that we had, I am happy to process group training requests which have been submitted by a clerk or other group representative. So I would just like to suggest that, you know, once I can connect with Lynn after a little while and we could show or whatever. And maybe we can set up just an afternoon for a session that anyone's available at once to attend. I mean, ethics issues are clearly something we should tune into. I'm not just speaking for myself. Well, it probably would be better in the evening if they can accommodate an evening meeting. If they can, but maybe Lynn can see if they'll, if they'll do an evening.
They might do an evening over Zoom and then you can have it at the library with the screen. Even though you don't like that.
I don't like that. I don't like being in person.
Okay, you're good.
People can stay home and, and then we don't know whether they have a Zoom or they didn't.
But if those people, if we all wanna go to the library for the ethics thing, the person can be on the TV and we can all be there and hold and take attendance. Patty can take attendance.
In other words, she can make her presentation. She can make her, Lynn, you and I will talk, will you? Just check with her later and see if she'd do an evening.
Yeah.
Just a session.
Because they've done that with comprehensive.
No, that's fixed. It's already fixed. Cal, you had number twenty-three also?
I did. Uh, I did. And that, this is a communication we had from Mr. Rashad. And he, he's speaking about, uh, work that he thinks needs to be done at the transfer station. And I know Lynn said that this was, this was passed on to her and, and I, and I assume, Lynn, I think you told him you would, would I do that?
It's not paid for, it's just repairs.
Well, that's good. And, and Rob, you probably, don't you, didn't you tell us you have a vision for some changes that are gonna be made that, that are going, so, I mean, let it, let it be sent to this gentleman indicating that DPW director has plans, intends to make significant changes.
It'll be very noticeable.
It'll be what, please?
Very noticeable, but it won't happen overnight.
No, no, of course it won't.
From the gate to the backyard.
There was just something done there. I don't know if you just said that or not, but, I would mean something. But I just went to the transfer station on, I don't know, Sunday and they put some gravel down.
What, what have you done?
Millions that we got for free.
What, what have you done, Rob? Tell us.
Put lots of stuff down.
Yeah, we built it up where it was puddling. I mean, I wanna get in there last June. I just did that because I have material.
You got stuff going on.
Oh, you.
It looked, it looked pretty good to me. I thought it was.
That was an improved step just to get that guy, you know, because I noticed in the camp, yeah, I've seen people stepping in puddles. I didn't like that. I don't like anything about places from all the walls. It needs improvements. I can't stand it in there. It'll take a little bit of time and it'll.
Yeah, and only recently the town acquired it, so we can make improvements now.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, that was the whole idea.
So there was something done earlier. Was he getting round, um, half of it or more than half of it?
So Lynn's letter can suggest that he may have noticed that improvements have already been made and more of significant nature are, or.
Ongoing. Ongoing.
Are ongoing.
Yes.
That's all.
That's it.
Okay.
If that's okay with everybody. Lynn, I'm sorry. Trying to dump.
Are there other administrative issues?
Ice, iceberg.
Okay, executives.
Other administrative.
All right, go ahead, Mike.
Nothing like, nothing like a response and counsel president. Just kidding. No, Mike, you go first.
Okay, I have a question. Maria, is there currently any off-site login ability for any employees?
Yes.
Can we end that?
Good, there are benefits to that. So, so a couple of employees have the ability.
I don't see how, I mean, I didn't mean to interrupt. I don't wanna be rude, especially to you. I don't see how we can allow an employee of any business to log in, punch a card remotely. There's no need for it. I mean, now I wanna let you talk, excuse me. I just, I just don't understand how that can exist. It doesn't make sense.
So there are, there are two employees who are allowed to use their phone as a login and a lockout. And the reason was, um, originally they were all here. The reason was that there was a need that arose because sometimes their days end at the post office or sometimes their days end at the library. Sometimes, so they're not always ending or beginning their day here. And so.
So people, some people, a day ends, a day ends.
So somebody has to go to the post office to.
Who goes to the post office for the town hall?
A few people, um, Dixie.
We can't name names. We shouldn't name names.
Okay, we should have named names. What, what positions? Can we talk about the positions?
Patty just volunteered herself. She ends up at the post office sometimes.
So.
Does, do you log in remotely? Log out remotely?
Here, here on the computer, only.
You go to the post office. How do you do it?
After hours.
You go and you don't get paid for it?
No, for my salary. But Jeanette also goes and the Staples take the maps down.
So the, what wound up happening was I was getting, you know, a few times a month I was getting saying, hey, I went to the post office. It took about fifteen minutes. Can you log me out at four fifteen or four o'clock or whatever that it might have been? And I didn't feel like it was my responsibility to do it because I'm not anybody's supervisor. I try to process the payroll. So one of the features of the paycheck system that we went to, which was stopping the, the, you know, cards that we had in the slot, was one of the features was that somebody could remotely log in over their phone. That was one of the features that we liked about it. We do have geographic fencing. So, for example, if you didn't want anybody logging in beyond the library, beyond, you could actually, it could be as specific as you want, like latitude and longitude. I can only log in here. Or it can be as broad as you want. So you can actually put a geographic fence around. But, you know, you can't do it out of Exeter. You can't do it beyond the post office. You can't do it beyond the library.
So I hear grumblings about it and I personally don't think it's fair or right to be able to log in work before you get here or have that can of worms opened, that hospital open. It doesn't seem right to me. I would like to, I would like to see if the council is interested in perhaps in the question that we end that practice.
That's up to you. I, I just don't feel like I, because when people ask me to change their time cards, I don't like to. If they're salaried, it's, you know, it's a little bit different, but an hourly person, they should have a supervisor who knows, because I don't know if they're at the post office. I don't know where they're ending or beginning their day. I don't know if they're taking a phone call. I don't know if they're checking messages on their way in.
Is it that, is it, they have to get paid to drive by the post office?
People don't wanna work fifteen minutes and not get paid.
Okay, I, I still.
You either trust people or you don't. Has, have there been any issues with this, Maria?
I mean, not for me. Not that I, I mean, I know that some people feel that it's not fair to have, some people have this ability, but it was only because the need arose and the, the technology is there. And once again, council can also say, well, nobody can, you know, nobody can punch in beyond, they can make offenses. It can be only.
And there are offenses, aren't there?
Excuse me, if we're gonna continue this conversation, we need to make it a new business item for next month.
I was just going to say that.
Can we do that?
I can do that.
Was that the other one, Mike?
My one other.
See. New business draft over?
Yeah, please. Um, I just, uh, I think this falls under administrative. I hope it does. I learned something that was disturbing and I wanna bring it up because I didn't know it. I was never told. And I don't know if you guys know it. I wanna make sure that on the practice that this continues is that the, the vehicle was a vehicle that, that white vehicle that's parked outside there right there was originally bought new from Flood Ford and was paid for out of the new vehicle, replacement fund, I think you call it. And then, when we wanted to purchase it, we wanted Scott to have it, he paid, his account paid for it to the DPW again. And the first time that it was paid for, it wasn't used by him, it was used by the DPW. It's unbelievable. So I don't know what it cost, forty-five grand? I haven't explored it once. Forty grand, fifty, I have no idea. I'd say forty-five grand. And then we decide that he should have that vehicle and then that account pays DPW again, transfers the money, another twenty-two thousand. And I didn't know anything about this. I don't know if it was explained properly or listed properly when Bill Donovan was the, was the, uh.
Son sergeant.
And I just found that disturbing and I just don't understand how that just happened on our, on our watch that we approved another twenty-two thousand to come out of the vehicle replacement fund to go to that and not, all on the dock. We had no idea that that was already paid for inappropriately, as far as I can tell. And that just happened again, so I don't think, I mean, it's, it doesn't matter if they need the money and he has too much. It doesn't, that's not the point. We can discuss that afterwards, but we can't just do stuff like that and have money transferred inappropriately because that's, that's wrong.
So. New business?
Another new business item? I don't know. I don't, I just wanted to make that statement.
That's it?
I think so. I mean, I don't know. You wanna look into it further? We just stopped, we just stopped the practice of whatever that was. I don't know what that was. What do you call that?
And then it happens again.
Well, I, I mean, I didn't know it was happening and I, and I probably signed the sheet to approve it and I had no idea what I was signing.
Well, the twenty-two thousand was.
And it's not my fault I didn't know I was signing, cause none of us knew.
Well, the twenty-two thousand was because he was supposed to get a credit and then, but they wanted it, they wanted, they like, he liked the vehicle.
He paid for it originally, right? His account, not him.
Well, it's not his account, it's the town's account.
Right, I, I, I understand. But that account paid for it originally and it didn't even go to that, it went to the DPW.
It's a vehicle replacement fund, so it's where we're placing a vehicle.
It's not for the, it's not for the council?
Well, it doesn't, I think the original intent was because that they pay, uh, they, that's not taxpayer money. And they were paying, um, it, it was building up, it was building up.
But was appropriate, I need to tell you.
Pretty bad, I can.
It was appropriate, it was on the bill sheet.
Appropriate of, of your current tax dollars?
Yes, it was. But it was on the bill sheet under, uh, vehicle replacement. I'm sorry, it's not on the bill.
So maybe we should just talk about it in October and then put it on the agenda.
Mine's simple. I'm just reporting back to you because last month there was an invitation to have someone attend a rejuvenation of the Washington County Regional Planning Council, if you remember. And I said, well, I'll go because it was mentioned, but you recall, we officially withdrew. So, so the point is I did go to that meeting, there were two towns represented and one of the gentlemen said, oh, but we know that Exodus withdrew. I said, that's true, but, but still we were invited to come back to see, you know, I mean, can, could we have rejoined if we decided we wanted to? I, I don't get some of this stuff. The point is there were two people there and my recommendation is, anybody else wanna attend? No, bye. Well, they're not, it just, it just, no.
Was it Richmond or Hopkinton?
No, and poor Richmond man, he was on his way to a hospital cause he had a relative that was dying. So he, he made a quick appearance, he said, but I'm sorry, I can't be here. And, and then we, yeah, anyway. What I found is that they met before and they hired legal counsel and I sat there thinking, gee, that's the first thing they need to do is hire legal counsel? Maybe they were trying to keep us out, I don't know, I'm just kidding, just kidding. I just wanted you to know, have you, that I went and I'm not pushing it, just saying. Don't break down.
No executive session?
Move to a chair.
That, Ken?
Excuse me?
All in favor?
Aye.
Real quick.
Meeting's over.
The meeting's over, but I'll answer your questions, I can.
I tried to miss me anything. I was, when I asked you, did any of you settle back, did it help the public?
We haven't heard anything.
I talked to them. Kill you in a minute. I, I heard a couple minutes. So short.